City Council meeting, we're here at City Hall, kind of spaced out. It's homecoming week here in the city of Milpitas. Milpitas High School, the home of the Trojans. Thanks everybody for tuning in. On youtube.com and Facebook Live. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order and we'll go to our city clerk, Wendy Wood for the roll call.
Councilmember Chua?
Here.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Present.
Councilmember Pham?
He'll be with us shortly, I think.
Here.
Oh, there he is. Okay, great.
Vice Mayor Montana?
Mayor Tran?
Here. Thank you very much Wendy and hey, during the closed session here, we have a conference with labor negotiations per usual. Alright folks, I'll see you in closed session.
Okay, welcome again to tonight's Milpitas City Council meeting. For anybody that's tuning in here this evening,
Thank you very much. Next up, we have presentations. There are no guests here and no photos, so I'll just go down by myself.
you're in the right place and it must be the right time. We've got a really a great number of agenda items here tonight that the city council is going to give their leadership to. Right now, we're in the presentations portion of the agenda. And I'm going to be speaking into this microphone. I know we've had previous mayors here in this chamber that used to have the wireless and they used to walk around and it was a heck of a presentation. I'll have to step my game up for that one one day. But let's get to the presentations. We got two of them here. And they couldn't be more important. First up, some proclamation. And we're going to go ahead and proclaim this month as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And many people, not just in Milpitas, but in our society, see all the pink out there on TV and in public. And so we're going to go ahead and declare and proclaim this month as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an annual campaign to increase awareness and public knowledge about breast cancer as well as an opportunity to raise funds for research. Breast cancer is the second most common cancer affecting women. It is estimated that one in eight women will develop breast cancer over the course of their lifetime. And over 280,000 women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in the United States this year. Early detection and regular screenings are the most reliable way to detect breast cancer early and treat this disease. The COVID-19 pandemic has produced new deficits in breast cancer early detection. So there is a renewed urgency to getting these recommended screenings scheduled before the cancer can spread and become less. We are united in our commitment to ending breast cancer and improving the lives of those affected by this illness and stand in solidarity with breast cancer survivors across the country to reaffirm our commitment to advancing research in efforts that deliver hope to patients everywhere. I want to encourage citizens and Milpitasians to join in activities that will increase awareness of what Americans and Milpitasians can do to prevent and control breast cancer and pay tribute to those who have lost their lives to this disease. Humbly, Irish Tran Mirror, the City of Milpitas, on behalf of the great city council, do hereby proclaim this month here, October 21, as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I think going forward, for any of these type of proclamations, we should do a moment of silence for those that have lost their lives to breast cancer. So let's go ahead and do that. Okay, the next presentation is also another emotional presentation item. And before we go to the Zoom, we have guests here on the Zoom. I do want to really do a short comment on what we're doing right now. So we really love our Milpitas family. And that doesn't just include all the neighborhoods, four dozen or so in Milpitas and all the neighborhoods and homes and families. But it also includes all the families that work for the city. Folks that work in every department here in Milpitas, we consider that Milpitas family. And when you give that much time in your day, in your week, in your month, in your year, in your career, we treat you like family. And we're going to do our best to put your family first as well. And we had one of our Milpitas family here in the city retire not too long ago. But come to find out, had some sort of things they were fighting to overcome. And that person's not here with us today to receive this. But he is not forgotten and never will be for all his years of service to the City of Milpitas Department of Recreation and Community Services. And so we have a key to the city here for Dale Flynnoy. And I think his family is here on Zoom. If someone can help me.
Yes, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. We have Dale's husband Elias Peralta here to accept the key on his behalf for his family.
Yes, welcome. Thank you for being with us here on Zoom tonight. Adele is a very valued member of our Milpitas family here in the City of Milpitas. And even after his retirement, obviously, the relationships and things that he's had here for just so many years, it means a lot to us. And we wanted to find the right time to honor him. And it's nice that night. I want to go to Renee. I know Renee, you worked very closely with Dale for many, many years. And so if you can really be the sort of the microphone, you know, really testifying about his career here.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll start. And then I know Elias had a few words to say. So I was able to work with Dale for over 30 years. And his passing has definitely left a hole in our hearts. But he left an amazing legacy of events and services and spaces that our residents have enjoyed for the past three decades. And we look forward to honoring that legacy in what we do moving forward. So I'll leave it to Elias to say a little more. I'll, I'll have to step my game up for that one, one day. But let's get to the presentations. We got two of them here. And they couldn't be more important. My first up is a proclamation and we're going to go ahead and proclaim this month as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And many people, not just in Milpitas, but in our society, see all the pink out there on TV and in public. And so we're going to go ahead and declare and proclaim this month as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an annual campaign to increase awareness and public knowledge about breast cancer, as well as an opportunity to raise funds for research. Breast cancer is the second most common cancer affecting women. It is estimated that one in eight women will develop breast cancer over the course of their lifetime. And over 280,000 women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in the United States this year. Early detection and regular screenings are the most reliable way to detect breast cancer early and treat this disease. The COVID-19 pandemic has produced new deficits in breast cancer early detection. So there is a renewed urgency. It's getting these recommended screenings scheduled before the cancer can spread and become less. We are united in our commitment to ending breast cancer and improving the lives of those affected by this illness and stand in solidarity with breast cancer survivors across the country to reaffirm our commitment to advancing research in efforts that deliver hope to patients everywhere. I want to encourage citizens and Milpitasians to join in activities that will increase awareness of what Americans and Milpitasians can do to prevent and control breast cancer and pay tribute to those who have lost their lives to this disease. Humbly, Irish Tran Mirror, the City of Milpitas, on behalf of the great city council, do hereby proclaim this month here, October 21, as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I think going forward, for any of these type of proclamations, we should do a moment of silence for those that have lost their lives to breast cancer. So let's go ahead and do that. Thank you. Okay, the next presentation is also another emotional presentation item. And before we go to the Zoom, we have guests here on the Zoom. I do want to really do a, a short comment on what we're doing right now. So we really love our Milpitas family. And that doesn't just include all the neighborhoods, four dozen or so in Milpitas and all the neighborhoods and homes and families. But it also includes all the families that work for the city, folks that work in every department here in Milpitas. We consider that Milpitas family. And when you give that much time in your day, in your week, in your month, in your year, in your career, we treat you like family and we're going to do our best to put your family first as well. And we, we had a, one of our Milpitas family here in the city retire not too long ago. But come to find out, had some sort of things they, they were fighting to overcome. And that person's not here with us today to receive this, but he is not forgotten and never will be for all his years of service to the City of Milpitas, Department of Recreation and Community Services. And so we have a key to the city here for Dale Flannoy. And I think his family is here on Zoom. If someone can help me. Renee, if.
Yes, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. We have Dale's husband Elias Peralta here to accept the key on his behalf for his family.
Thank you. Yes, welcome. Thank you for being with us here on Zoom tonight. Adele is a very valued member of our Milpitas family here in the City of Milpitas. And even after his retirement, obviously the relationships and things that he's had here for just so many years, it means a lot to us. And we wanted to find the right time to honor him. And, and it's nice that night. I want to go to Renee. I know Renee, you worked very closely with Dale for many, many years. And so if you can really be the, sort of the microphone, you know, really testifying about his career here.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll start and then I know Elias had a few words to say. So I was able to work with Dale for over 30 years. And his passing has definitely left a hole in our hearts. But he left an amazing legacy of events and services and spaces that our residents have enjoyed for the past three decades. And we look forward to honoring that legacy in what we do moving forward. So I'll, I'll leave it to Elias to say a little more.
Thank you, Renee. Mayor and council, thank you very much. This is an honor. I know Dale would be very touched by this, receiving the key. He's truly a great man. We're going to miss him. Thank you. On behalf of the family, we just thank you for the recognition.
Let's, let's have another moment in memory of Dale. Thank you. And we're always here for you and your family. Thank you very much. Moving on to public forum. Tonight's public forum will be one minute, one minute. We have a high quality number of agenda items. And we'll keep it consistent, one minute all night, one minute all night for every item, including public forum. So I'll go to the chamber here for public forum. If anybody here in the chamber at Milpitas City Hall, 455 East Calaveras would like to provide a comment for public forum, now would be the time, or you can wait, or you can, okay. Mr. Montemiro, come on up.
Voltaire Montemiro of Milpitas. Mayor of Las Miras, you can, you know, Mr. City Managing Staff. Yeah, follow through, what a country, what a government, what a city government. Only thing, there is big difference compared to wherever in the world. In other words, we're grateful. We are taken care of very well. In other words, we get politics, no offense. If we could keep a little bit of the religious belief, we will go for the people, for the sake of the people, the kids, the school. We should go for this. We should be with the COVID-19 and we'll be all right. We will survive. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, I'll go to the virtual chamber here. First up with the virtual raised hand, we have Joseph Weinstein. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for allowing me to speak. Years ago, when the community was involved in helping to write the Open Governance Ordinance, we all agreed that a three-minute public forum was essential for residents to be able to be heard and items. I totally understand when we've got lots of people in the audience that want to speak, that it's appropriate to limit the times. But I think, and I'm requesting that the council meet and consider putting the public forum time back over a minute. Thank you.
And thank you very much. I'll consider that for the future meeting. Okay, great. Any virtual raised hands on the Zoom? Welcome to all the attendees. I see a nice number of attendees here on the Zoom. Welcome to tonight's meeting. We got some great items. All right, going once, going twice. I see no further requests. Okay, here we go. Thomas Valori, Public Forum, welcome. One, meet your microphone there.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Wanted to extend an invitation for this Saturday at 8:30. Hopefully, Unhoused will be cleaning up the area along the railroad tracks on Railroad Avenue. And any help that we can get from other community members would be much appreciated. So join us again on Saturday from 8:30 to 11:00 for the cleanup. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay. What a beautiful evening here in the City of Milpitas. The fall season has arrived and it's homecoming week at Milpitas High School. Go Trojans! I don't see any further requests for public forum, going once, going twice on the Zoom. Thank you very much. That's it. We're moving now to announcements and future agenda items. And we'll go ahead and start off per usual. Our city manager, Steve McHarris.
Well, good evening, Mayor Tran, members of the city council. I have two brief announcements for you this evening. First, we will be holding the Filipino Heritage Flag Raising Event this Friday from 4:00 PM to 5:30 PM. We're keeping an eye on the rain forecast, which may require we move the event into the community center auditorium. If that happens, we will keep it safe with mask requirements and social distancing for the audience seating, speakers, and performance areas. The second item I have is that the city will be holding a virtual interactive community open house to move, to review the Milpitas Metro District specific plan. This coming Monday, October 25th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, staff will share what the community built vision means for the surrounding neighborhoods and the region, a timeline for potential changes, and answer questions from the community. Registration and more information is on our city's website. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you very much. Our city manager, Steve McHarris, excellent job. All right, let's see announcements. Where should I start? I want to acknowledge that last week was a really a very difficult week in our city. There were incidents, about two or probably three of them that took place here in town. I'm not going to get much into it here during the announcements, but I want to thank God for the safety of our all people in Milpitas. I'm truly grateful that our police officers were not significantly or physically harmed. I know there's some things, but just, I want to just thank Milpitas Police for their action in protecting our community last Friday and a couple of days before that, that was another challenge. Just, I, I know, I was talking to the city manager and sometimes we can't predict the weather, but we can prepare and respond. And I couldn't ask for a better city to be a part of. And if anybody out there is listening from the police department, I'm just truly grateful for all the work you're doing. I know our residents, you know, it's a small town. Everybody talks, everybody sees things. So folks know what I'm talking about. But so yeah, I just want to thank our, our police department and also our fire department as well. An integral part in our community. I want to add that I want to give an early birthday wish, I guess. An early birthday to our city manager, Steve McHarris. It's his birthday. I know that from the HR newsletter. Thank you, Janine. I know you're listening. But yeah, we're just really thankful to have, pardon me. Just really thankful to have you, Steve, and happy early birthday. Thank you. Yeah, okay. So if you see Steve, yeah, tell him happy birthday. It's this weekend. And the last thing I'll say for announcements is just, it's homecoming week in Milpitas. Let's come together as a community. I know that I attended homecoming in the past with former Mayor Bob Livinggood. We got a picture with former Mayor Danny Weisberg that I'll always keep in my heart. You know, I know a former elected officials, the kids took part in homecoming. So come on out if you're not busy. Come out, come on out Friday to Milpitas High School. It's the homecoming game with all the tradition that we have in our 67 years in Milpitas. I do believe there will be a homecoming king and queen. The marching band and the color guard are the number one marching band and color guard in Northern California. So you're going to see some electric performances by them. The cheerleading squad is looking very well organized and really cheering better than any other cheer squad around. So a big game against Homestead and those kids down in Cupertino are coming up to Milpitas. So we got to let them know who the Trojans are. So folks out there in the community, if you're listening, come on out Friday and support our youth and families at Milpitas High School, 7:00 PM Friday. It's the homecoming game. I think there's going to be a break in the rain as well. Okay, those are my announcements. It is a special night and a special week here in Milpitas. It'll be a blessed one. All right, next up here for the announcements and future agenda items, we have council member Chua.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. Also, I want to wish our city manager happy birthday. The 18th, his 18th, I think. And also I want to acknowledge former mayor Bob Livinggood and former vice mayor Armando Gomez. Thank you for being here this evening. And I want to thank our Milpitas Police Department for doing such an excellent job last weekend. Thank you. First one, I want to, for the record, I want to state that I attended the League of California Cities last month in Sacramento. The first one, the second one is, Milpitas, just like other cities, is experiencing increase in donut street rides. Feedback from Oakland Councilmember Sheng Tao to Mayor Tran, single out reflective road marker as an effective way to reduce the donut street rides. So I'm asking the city executive team to please look into this. Thank you. I heard it's the cheapest and easiest way to install.
Is there a photo here? Okay.
Yes, right here.
So that's going to prevent donuts from happening up in the city of Oakland. Okay, this looks like those are reflective street markers.
Right.
Those look very low cost. That might be something.
A box is like a couple of hundreds.
Yeah, we got some donuts here in town, all you young people out there.
Number two, I would like to request an agenda item on November 2nd, council meeting. That would allow the council to rescind direction given related to 1355 California Circle and include direction to allow the project application to move forward without being tied to a specific plan. And I would like to request that to, to be agendized on November 2nd. My third one is, as you know, we did the cleanup at Bob Rogers Park last weekend. And that being said, I would like to recommend an initiative to have in, to have, adopt a park drive for our city. So we have 36 parks in our city. So we'd like to ask families or organizations to be, adopt a park. And, and I'm looking at the executive team to give us some guidelines on that one. Thank you so much. And number four, a couple of residents asked me to look into the selections of BMR units in our city. They want to know how we select applicants to be, to get selected on those BMR, below market rates, units.
Yeah, how do we know where we are in line for that, huh? That's, we need, that's transparency, yep.
Right. So now, so if we can do that, I think that would help a lot. The number, number five, the, the rain is here. And I was thinking about our cross, crossing guard safety. And I don't know if they have it already. I would like to recommend to provide them with the Milpitas neon safety jackets and rain boots.
Yeah, we got to take care of our crossing guards.
That would be great.
I think that's a tremendous idea, safety. Get them some neon rain coats with the hoodie. Maybe some protective neon rain boots. We don't want their feet to get cold. Okay.
Number six, I was looking at the consent number 10. I think it was from Ashwini. And it occurred to me that even with the challenges of the pandemic, the 2021 work plan, the commissioners, our commissioners, were able to, to deliver good, good results and also were able to meet some of their challenges. And as you know, the last two years, we haven't had the commission's appreciation event. So I would like to suggest, just to show an appreciation to our commissioners, to provide them maybe with a cotton jacket, a half zip, and just an appreciation because we want to retain them. It's not an easy, it, it's a volunteer work. And I think we need some show, we need to show some acknowledgement for them.
Yeah, we, we don't really do anything much for our commissioners, our valued commissioners. I know we all on the council, our council liaisons, our volunteer commissioners, let's get them a warm sweater for the winter here. Yeah, they don't get paid.
And, and, and the last one, this is very exciting. As you know, I'm the liaison for the Youth Advisory Commission. And they're doing, and where is my, oh, there you go. They're doing a Halloween, Halloween event over at the teen center. It's really fun. We went through it last meeting last week. And they have raffle, they have games, they have cookie painting. They have all sorts of things. So please come. So I think that's it for me. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, council member Chua. Excellent. I, I really like the reflective road markers. I think that can be a very low-cost solution to some of the donuts here in town. I know folks in different neighborhoods. I know you've probably seen a donut or two. I'm not talking about Christie's. Next up, we got the vice mayor, Carmen Montana.
Thank you, Mayor. So first of all, I want to thank the police department for doing an outstanding job of protecting our citizens. And also I am so thankful that none of our officers were hurt. So thank you for the wonderful job you guys are doing to keep our city safe. And a couple of, a few suggestions or is, for, for some of our council requests is first, look into a future site or a theater for the performing, for the performing arts. I know that's a CIP project, but we'll at least put it on the list.
Send it to that meeting, yeah.
And then place recycle, recycle bins in our parks. You know, as I visit our parks, I notice it. Very few have recycle bins and I think that's important. Three, adopt a park signage subcommittee. I know I brought, I brought this up before about adopting a, adopt the park. But and I, our city mentioned that, our staff, Renee mentioned, we already have, we already have a policy on that. But I'd like to, I'd like to be involved in that. And another council member, or the mayor, adopt a park signage subcommittee. And then the other one, employee clipper passes. I would like to reestablish that so that way we can eliminate the carbon, our carbon footprint.
Encourage public transportation.
We used to have that. I'm not sure if we still have it, so we can look into that. And then the other one, establish a new tool shed site. I know the other one used to be at our old fire station, the one that is being rebuilt now. So I'd like to establish it, possibly put it at the maintenance yard or near there so we can have access to it. And the other one, a CIP, look into purchasing a building on Main Street for a museum. And there are several that are for sale there. The other one is a longtime resident, Albert Vogel, senior. They were a Portuguese family that were farmers here. And I like to, I would like to see their picture in the senior center as well because they were early pioneers in Milpitas. And the last thing I have is to set a meeting for our Main Street Subcommittee so we can go over some of the logistics of sprucing up the area before the December event. That's it. Thank you.
That's lovely. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Carmen Montana. And we'll send many of those items, if not all, to the appropriate designated meetings that we usually have year over year. Thank you very much. A lot of CIP stuff. I like that. Okay, next up, we got council member Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. At this time, I would like to ask council conservation to bring back following items and move council direction. There's been a couple of concerns from our business community as well as some of our entrepreneurs here in Milpitas. We have been seeing an influx of food trucks that are parking in parking lots. None of the food trucks belong to any licenses that in the City of Milpitas. Most of them are coming from the City of San Jose and Fremont. Therefore, the City of Milpitas is missing out on business revenue as well as it's affecting our businesses. Because they are taking the clientele of businesses who are very suffering. Currently, we do not have a policy in place for food trucks where we are collecting any type of revenue on a permit or any type of process. And so I would like to have staff come back to have a council discussion and to move direction into implementing a new permit fee for food trucks and ensuring that these food trucks are located in Milpitas, that their businesses are in Milpitas. And so I would like to kindly ask for your support, as well as that council, to bring that discussion forward.
Okay, absolutely. I think we do have enforcement. And so the city manager will take care of that.
Point of clarification. City manager, is there currently a policy in regards to food trucks in the city of Milpitas or an existing permit?
I don't believe there's a specific policy for the food trucks, but I do believe that the food trucks operating sales in Milpitas would require a business license. And so there would be enforcement action that we could take.
Could we bring back a status update? I know there was a conversation about having a food truck circle next to 7-Eleven in that plot of land. Would we be able to bring back that conversation to council and have an update? To see how we could give food trucks an opportunity to have a space in the city of Milpitas?
Councilmember Dominguez, are you referring to the project, a project that was approved? Was it the seventy-six station over in that location?
I believe so.
For food trucks?
Yes.
So the question really is, and I'm not, I don't believe that's been developed, but has been approved. So I don't, I would have to, I could get back to the council on the status of the applicant, of the development of the project. It's already been approved.
That would be great. Because I would love to have a place for the food trucks and not just enforcement. So I, I think that's really important. If we could put those together, please. The other thing I would like to ask this council for support is the forty-one developmental assets that are led by Santa Clara County YMCA and other nonprofits allows for children to have the building blocks and the community to have building blocks and work together as one to ensure that our youth have the building blocks that they need to be successful. I would like the city of Milpitas to adopt one developmental asset each month and have marketing material and also have each council member adopt the developmental asset in order for us to build those building blocks for our youth. I would like to kindly ask for consideration to implement this program and to adopt the forty-one developmental assets as part of the city of Milpitas.
How much does that cost?
It's free of charge.
Okay. And is it actual building block? I'm not sure what this program entails.
Help me understand your question. You're asking if it's a building block. So the forty-one developmental assets is a curriculum that is actually adopted by social workers in Santa Clara County. Each building block, there's forty-one building blocks. For example, having a student belong to a community center. So the city of Milpitas could adopt that building block for the month and make activities and make sure that there's marketing materials on how individuals at home, at school, at faith-based organizations can implement this building block. The goal is to help provide programs that are free of charge and that we are adopting the structure in order to implement the building blocks for our youth to be successful adults. The program is already written. It is free of charge and has been adopted by the city of Fremont, the city of Santa Clara, and the city of San Jose.
Thank you very much. Does this require staffing?
No.
Okay, I support it.
Perfect. Could we bring that back for adoption?
Yeah, we'll go to the list. We'll send it to the list and we'll prioritize it next chance we get. Carry on.
Perfect. Thank you very much. The next request that I would like to ask this council. The next request that I would like to ask this council is we had a very heartbreaking experience recently. Thank you very much, Milpitas Police Department, for helping this family as they are overcoming this challenge. But we had a member in our community who died by suicide. It's extremely hard for many of us to say the word. And it's heartbreaking as a mother. I can't even imagine across what they're feeling. At this time, I would like to ask this council to adopt a program as other cities have, where they have posted the 1-800 number on every single fence in their community, especially those that are over, overpasses. The reason for this is that studies show that is, if this number is available for someone who is either thinking about suicide, this actually serves as a deterrent, even if it's not placed in the place where they're thinking about committing suicide. Just by seeing this number, it provides second thoughts and an outlet for those who feel alone or don't know where to turn. I would like to kindly ask the city of Milpitas to invest funds to implement a small plaque with this 1-800 number around town, particularly in places where youth congregate, like our teen center and overpasses in our community. I would like to have that conversation and have that item back for discussion and implementation. Thank you for your kind consideration.
Thank you very much. Yeah, you bring back a list of locations for the council to discuss. I, I do believe the suicide that happened last week was actually in a home. But really, there is no safe place. But we do not have any area in Milpitas that has any pattern of suicide. And, and so if you have some areas you'd like to indicate, you can bring that back at a future meeting.
At this time, could I kindly count with putting that item on the list?
I just, I just want to be certain that we don't mark multiple areas of the city that have no history of suicide attempts or suicide. I, I I don't see there's a need for notices without any prior history. And so if you have an area in town you may be aware of, that you'd like to share, you can bring that back.
At this time, could I count with putting this item on the list in order for us to prevent suicide in the city of Milpitas, Mayor?
I think your request is incomplete, so I, I'm not ready to do that.
So we go down the line for a vote, please. Thank you.
I don't, I don't, if there's any support, please demonstrate. But there, I believe, I don't hear any further support for this item. But I don't want to close the door. I'm asking you, I'm requesting you to bring back the areas of concern. I, I'm not aware of any areas of concern, so will you fulfill my request?
With all due respect, Councilmember Fan has the button on.
Okay.
I actually would like to see this come back for discussion and action. I think it's worth exploring.
There's been no demonstrated evidence that there's, it's a very hard conversation. I know we've all lost, okay, Chris.
I just wanted to give a gentle reminder to the council to not debate the topic because it's not on the agenda this evening.
Okay. Well, my request is for the council member to bring back more of a detailed sort of description of their concern. There is no evidence right now. And so that request is incomplete. I'm requesting it come back with more detail. Councilmember Dominguez.
Per Roberts Rules of Order, there's been a second that automatically triggers a line vote.
There's no, this agenda, this item is, this topic is not agendized, so there is no motion possible.
It's an idea, and it's been seconded by Councilmember Fan. At this time, I am going to go ahead and call the question for a line vote.
But this is not agendized, so there's no motion. I'm sorry.
The idea has been seconded. Could I go ahead and ask the city manager or the city attorney to please direct?
What page is this in the Roberts Rules? Is there a page, is there a page number, please?
City Attorney.
Mayor and Council, Roberts Rules is not intended to be used as a sword in council meetings, but the description as to what the council should be doing with this topic is literally on the agenda. So you can read what the, what the request is. If there's a request that comes in, we just go down the line, yes or no. But at this point, it sounds like there's two yeses. I don't know what the remaining kind of answer would be from the rest of the council.
Thank you very much. At this time, it is an idea per the agenda. It says any new ideas, so therefore it's on the agenda. The idea has been seconded. And at this time, all I'm asking is for us to go down the item, down the line in order for us to put our vote.
Okay, I'll go first. None or no? Okay.
Who's next? Thank you, Vice Mayor. That's exactly what I'm asking for. I'm asking for this item to be placed on the list.
Okay, okay. I'll do a friendly amendment then. It'll be put on the list, but Councilmember Dominguez, please indicate to the city council where these areas are that require attention to your request, which is regards to a suicide.
I would absolutely make sure that I bring a memo forward and I will work with our hope team in order to build a policy to bring it back and serve as a prevention mechanism. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay. So I'll go yes to that, but you know, I, you know, I, I, there is no history of areas in the city that have suicide incidents. I thank God. This, you know, there are other areas, I'm aware, in the Bay Area, landmarks and things, but I don't want to label areas of the city as, as areas that have a history of suicide when they don't. That's complete regression. And I'm not sure if that's a positive step for our community. So I'll vote yes, as long as you bring back evidence list of areas where there's suicide incidents. I don't think there are in our public areas, so.
Thank you very much.
So that'll move on. We'll put that on the list. Okay, carry on.
Mayor, for adding that to the list. I appreciate it. I will make sure that I bring back a policy forward for this council. Again, I appreciate your consideration and approval to add on the list. My last and final request for this council is there is a nonprofit organization who's been doing amazing work in the city of Milpitas. Housing for the Unhoused has, has been out there. Our unhoused have been asking many of us for trash bins. At this time, I would like to ask this council to bring back an item in order for us to fund trash bins for the unhoused community or to be placed in the city of Milpitas to help us collect the trash and to add them into a routine pickup or collection. I cannot discuss this further because of how it's agendized. At this time, I would like to ask for council consideration in order to, again, put some trash bins out in our community to help our homeless and to, or to allocate them to this nonprofit who's already doing the work. I thank you for your kind consideration.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to ask for the fiscal impact for that request. Can you provide it?
Thank you so much, Mayor, for that ask. What I am hearing you say is that you would like to support it, but you would like to see the financial cost. At this time, I feel it's best, I believe we do have a commission. Would we be able to place this item in the commission or in the committee?
Which, is it commission or subcommittee? I'm not sure what you're referring to.
It would be a commission, not the sub, not the subcommittee, because the task force doesn't have a budget. The subcommittee doesn't have a budget. So it would have to go into a commission committee.
Which commission?
I would look for your leadership in order to delegate that.
Well, it's your request. I'm not sure where you're taking this.
Where I would like to take it is for the city to provide trash bins for our unhoused members. I would like to bring it back as an item of discussion and allocate it, just like we did with other items that we have funded. I would like to add it to the list.
I, I think my primary question was, what's the fiscal impact for this request?
The financial impact would probably be about fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, well, let's send it to the homelessness task force. And we'll add that to the list. I know they're wrapping up their work. And we'll package it all up together with their request. Carry on.
Point of clarification. Does this subcommittee task force have a budget allocation?
The task force is separate from the subcommittee. Those are two different types of working groups. The homelessness task force is working to bring proposals to our city council at a very near date. And so I think your request revolves around the unhoused. And so that would be the proper working group of residents to further explore your requests. We do have our building director, who's the sort of staff liaison there, so we'll have eyes on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the clarification, Mayor. Could I go ahead and have a date then for this to be brought back to our council? Will we go ahead and have a date of the end of November?
Well, we'll have to check with the housing task force. We'll have to check with them, but we'll send this over there. Carry on.
Sounds great. Thank you very much for your kind consideration and approval. That concludes my request.
Thank you very much. Any further requests for announcements and future agenda items? We're in the month of October, just about a few months into our fiscal year, really my favorite time of the fiscal year here, before we get to the second half, which is budgeting. So this is just really a great time to take a little more time to explore. So I really give kudos to all my colleagues. I see no further requests for announcements and future agenda items. Great ideas start right here in the Milpita City Council Chamber. And next up's the announcement of conflict of interest and campaign contributions with our city attorney, Christopher Diaz.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd ask the mayor and each council member whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda. And we'll start with Councilmember Chua.
Let me get the microphone here. One more time, Councilmember.
None.
Thank you. Councilmember Dominguez.
Um, none.
Thank you. Councilmember Fan.
None.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Montana.
None.
Thank you, and Mayor Tran.
None. Thank you very much, Chris.
One additional question for the mayor and council. Please disclose any campaign contributions of a hundred dollars or more received within the last twelve months from any of the parties entering into contracts with the city on tonight's agenda or any contributions received from the development project applicants for development projects on tonight's agenda. Councilmember Chua.
Let me get the microphone here.
None.
Thank you. Councilmember Dominguez.
Okay, we'll need to slow down with the microphones here. Councilmember Dominguez.
None.
Thank you. Councilmember Fan.
None.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Montana.
None.
Thank you, and Mayor Tran.
It's none.
Thank you. Let the record reflect none of both questions. Mayor, if you'd like, I'll continue with the code of conduct.
Yes, please.
So be respectful and courteous. Words, tone, and body language do matter. Model civility. Avoid surprises. Praise publicly and criticize privately. Focus on the issue, not the person. Refrain from using electronic devices while on the council dais. Disclose conflicts of interest and affiliations related to agenda items. Separate governing from campaigning. The council speaks with one voice after making policy on issues. Respect the line between policy and administration. And the council will hold one another accountable to comply with this code of conduct. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. And we'll move on to the approval of agenda. Let's see, I got one request here for tonight's agenda. I want to move item number seventeen, item number seventeen, our community services, sustainable infrastructure, item number seventeen, seventeen folks want to move it right after item number twelve, right after the public hearing. Okay, great. Looking for any further requests for the agenda. Okay. Okay, next up, we got Councilmember Chua. Finger slipped over there, huh? Careful, careful, careful. That's an important button right there you have. Okay, great. Any further requests from the dais here? We've got everybody on the dais tonight. It's a great night here in Milpitas. These items are certainly ones that many have been looking forward to. No further requests, I'll go ahead and move to approve the agenda. Need a second, need a second. Who's got the second? Let me get a second. We got a second from Councilmember Chua, as is shown on my screen. It's a motion by myself, a second by Councilmember Chua. All in favor will go down the line. If I may ask the city clerk from here on out to do the, the vote.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Aye.
Councilmember Fan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Montana?
Aye.
Mayor Tran?
Aye. Thank you very much. Wendy, that's the agenda. The motion's been carried, that item's been approved, moving on to consent calendar. Consent calendar, I see no requests on my end. I like the consent calendar as it is. Any requests for the consent calendar? Any requests, any requests? Okay, any requests? I see no request for the consent calendar. Hearing no objections, hearing no objections, I'll move it. I'll move to approve the consent calendar. Need a second, need a second. He's got the second, second. Councilmember Chua? Councilmember Chua with the second, and we'll go to the vote.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Aye.
Councilmember Fan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Montana?
Aye.
Mayor Tran?
Aye. Thank you very much. The consent calendar has been approved. All right, let's get into it. It's the public hearing, folks, the public hearing. Let's have a great meeting tonight. Let's do a little time check. I want to welcome all our attendees. It's really a great list tonight, a little above average in terms of the Zoom attendees. And we'll go to item number 12, public hearing, introduce ordinance number 208.54, amending various sections of Title 8, Chapter 2 of the Milpitas Municipal Code relating to sewer operation and maintenance. And we'll go to our Director of Public Works, Tony Enda.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council Members. Tony Enda here with the Public Works Department, and I'll be introducing this topic tonight. But the full presentation will be provided to you by our Deputy Public Works Director, Elaine Marshall. As you're aware, our sanitary sewage in the city is collected and then pumped over to the regional wastewater facility in San Jose for treatment. As part of our agreement with the city of San Jose for this treatment, they, any time that city of San Jose makes a change to their ordinance in order to stay in compliance with regulatory requirements, we are to also make the changes as well. So tonight you'll be hearing from Elaine Marshall regarding these necessary changes that are needed for our sewer code. So with that, I'll turn it over to Deputy Public Works Director Elaine Marshall.
Thanks, Tony. Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Elaine Marshall. As Tony said, the Deputy Public Works Director can, um, can you pull up my slide presentation, please? Thank you. I'm here tonight to provide an overview of the recommended changes to the municipal code related to sewer operations and maintenance. Next slide, please. I'll start with a little bit of context on what the sewer code is. It's actually also known as the sanitary code and makes up Title 8, Chapter 2 of the Milpitas Municipal Code. It lists all the rules and regulations associated with the use of the sanitary sewer system. This includes regulations pertaining to the disposal of sewage and industrial wastewater into the sanitary sewer system in order to protect the system as well as the treatment facility and the collection system workers and facility workers. The code also complies with all applicable laws, rules and regulations and orders of the state of California and the United States. And really kind of overall, the goal is to protect the health, safety and comfort of our public as well as the health of the San Francisco Bay. Next slide, please. So what's driving these updates? As Tony mentioned, there are some, some required, some revisions requested from San Jose. The main drivers for these are the Federal Clean Water Act as well as a state order governing the discharge requirements for sanitary sewer systems. Both of these regulations strive to reduce and control pollutants and chemicals from entering the sanitary sewer system and reduce sanitary sewer overflows and ensure that if there are overflows, staff properly respond and and, and control them and prevent them from happening in the future. Some of the, the revisions are also based on findings from a recent EPA audit of San Jose's industrial pre-treatment program, which takes me to my next slide, please. So San Jose, as you all know, Milpitas's wastewater is treated by the San Jose Santa Clara Regional Wastewater Facility. San Jose operates this facility and as part of their responsibilities as the facility operator, they administer the industrial pre-treatment program. This program regulates industrial facilities and specifically the discharge of process water or manufacturing water or other operational type industrial discharges from those facilities. San Jose permits these facilities. Those permits specify pre-treatment requirements that require the facilities to reduce their chemical loads prior to being discharged into our sanitary collection system. These requirements are also, or this program is actually also overseen by US EPA and subject to regular audits by the Environmental Protection Agency. A recent audit identified code changes needed to improve program effectiveness. San Jose has already adopted these changes to their municipal code and have asked that all tributary cities, including Milpitas, adopt the same revisions. Next slide, please. The changes needed to the code to improve program enforcement and effectiveness include clarifying who's actually responsible for enforcement. While San Jose has administered this program for all the tributary cities for years, what we're doing with these revisions is clarifying San Jose's Director of Environmental Services responsibility to enforce the industrial pre-treatment program. And we're also specifying that the Public Works Director is responsible for overseeing and enforcing all the other requirements of the municipal code. Some of the other changes include updating or adding new definitions limited to, including but not limited to the types of reports that these industrial facilities need to submit, such as a baseline monitoring report, best management practices that the facilities need to implement as well as a 90-day compliance report. There are also updates to the requirements for facilities to resample if any of their discharge limits are exceeded and what reports need to be provided. There's also some changes that clarify the process for transferring a wastewater discharge permit to a different owner. Next slide, please. Additional changes to the code seek to actually increase the limit for industrial facilities that are, that, that require city council approval. So prior to this recommended change, the code included a limit of 12,000 gallons per day, which required city council approval. So any, any new facility that was discharging more than 12,000 gallons per day per acre needed to be approved by council. With these revisions, we're actually looking to increase the, that limit to 100,000 gallons per day, which is a more standard amount. We're also clarifying violations and civil penalties for fail, failure to comply with their discharge permit requirements and other provisions of the municipal code. And then, next slide, please. Um, we're actually also making some administrative changes. The city of Milpitas recently took on administration of the fats, oils and grease program. This is a program that, where we inspect food service facilities and restaurants that discharge grease into the sanitary system. We want to make sure that there actually have treatment that removes that grease prior to it entering the system, since you all know that grease can, can, can cause clogs and overflows. So Milpitas had taken over that program in 2017. And what we're doing now is just formalizing the, the changeover of that program to Milpitas. We're also doing some clarifications to the federal dental affluent guidelines. This program regulates and requires dental offices to remove any mercury amalgam from their wastewater prior to sending it to the sanitary system. And then my last slide, next slide, please, this last slide. We are making some clarifications to property owner responsibility for maintenance of the sewer, all the way from the line, from the house to the main. This is consistent with previous legal interpretation. And final slide. So this is kind of a summary of all the changes to the municipal code that we're bringing forward tonight. The staff recommendation is before you to open and conduct the public hearing, close the public hearing, to have the city attorney read the title of the ordinance and for the city council to move to waive the first reading beyond the title and introduce the ordinance, amending the sections of Title 8 of the municipal code to make the corrections, clarifications, updates and modifications related to sewer operations and maintenance. That concludes my presentation and I'm here to answer any questions. And yeah, look forward to your discussion tonight.
Thank you very much, Elaine Marshall from our Public Works Department. And just really thank you for the presentation. I'll go ahead and move to open up the public hearing. If there are no objections, I'll move to open up the public hearing. If there are no objections, hearing no objections, the public hearing is now open. Okay, great. I want to really take part in the public hearing here. If I can go back to Elaine, can we go to the slide that shows the private property home and the city connection? We had a lot of conversations here in the city from residents with the pipes. I just want to review this for the public's benefit to see, what are the actual changes here? They sort of, what is the status quo right now? And what, what's really the difference here?
It's actually aligning the code with, with status quo and prior legal interpretation. And so what we're doing is kind of bringing the code to be consistent with practice. The, the, this slide shows the side sewer, which is made up of two components, the house lateral and the house sewer. And what has been, practice has been that the property owner is responsible for everything that flows through that line from the house through to the sewer main in, in the middle of the street.
So that's the existing responsibility of the homeowner from the house, pardon me, from the structure to the sewer main. And what are we proposing tonight? How's that different?
Well, actually, we're proposing to align the code with that practice. The code had, had gone through some revisions earlier this year and there was some language that made it less clear.
Okay, so from just the look of it, what changes or nothing changes?
The change is specifying that the property owner is responsible for the entire side sewer.
Okay, and, and is that different? Are we changing the previous responsibility? I, I'm sorry if I'm, I'm having a hard time. I'm not a, I'm not, I'm not a plumber, but I want to really, for the residents at home to... I heard some laughs over here, okay? Hey, they make a lot of money, they make a lot of money, but that's a different thing.
They do, they do.
So I just want to, respect to the plumbers, I know many.
Mayor Tran, if you, if you may, I'll just clarify here too, because, I mean, really this issue was a result of our staff out in the field when they have to respond to these sewer line requests. It needed this, needed a little bit of information clear up on this, on this ordinance here. So really, the response has always been the same. Residents' response will make sure that everything that gets pushed out from their home makes it all the way to the sewer main. So the sewer, so the sewer main in our city, then can pump that through our system off to the plant. There was some language in the ordinance that made it a little less clear on exactly who that responsible was, was on. So there were issues in the field between our city staff and some residents on really getting some clarification. So what we've done here is just change, is clarify the language. So it's really crystal clear. So when our staff goes out in the field to respond to sewer line backup, it's very crystal clear in the report whose responsibility it is.
Got it, thank you very much. I, I appreciate each of you for the explanation. I get it now. It takes two people for me, but, uh, no, I get it now. And this will certainly help our, our city staff as they go out. As you know, many homes in this city are aged very much like the 67 years of our government. And so we're, you know, periodically seeing sort of these pipe concerns. So this will actually be really great. I'm glad you brought this to staff, pardon me, brought this to council, Elaine and Tony. I have no further requests for this item. We'll go down the dais and then we'll go to public comment, of course. Next up, we have Councilmember Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. When I see that screen, I, I do, I have actually been receiving a lot of complaints. Personally, I've also experienced this. Tony, if we adopt this change to make this alignment, there is one big concern that I have that I feel very, very strongly about because these sewer pipe projects to fix are expensive. They run between like 15,000 to 20,000. Many of the causes are the roots of the trees in our community. So my question is, if we align this, because I know that's where the, if, I, I could just tell you from my own street, right? There's been this chatter of sometimes the city comes and it defines the line of whose responsibility different. Personally, I think if it's a city tree and the city roots that's causing the sewer issues, it doesn't, I personally think that it shouldn't matter where it starts because if it's the trees that belong to the city that caused it, then I do think the city needs to pay for it. I feel very strongly about that. So I don't want to adopt language that is going to not allow for homes who sewer and the pipes have been backed up because of the roots of the tree. If anything, I would actually like to add language that if the buildup or the pipes are damaged by a city tree, then it needs to be the city's responsibility to fix it. I stand very strongly on that. So I just want to make sure that if we adopt this, that it's not going to take the discretion away from staff to allow those updates or, you know, for us to fix that.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that input, Councilmember Dominguez. So the adoption of this clarification really is a matter of, it's important to make sure that we're protecting staff that are out there, providing information to the residents on what their responsibility is to make sure that whatever just gets discharged from the home makes it all the way to the sewer main to get, to get taken away. Now, the issue about tree roots growing into sewer lines, it's been, it's been discussed on many levels before. We do handle those through our, through many processes. I think when, when, a lot of times when a city tree is involved in that, we, we do have processes in place where we work with the homeowner to, to take a look at the impacts to their, to this, to their sewer line. If it is caused by, if it is exposed and is something that's shown to be a city tree issue, we do, do root pruning as part of that process. And if that continues to be an issue, then with, with that, we do offer tree removal services of a city tree when and necessary. So we have a process in place where we've been working through that. I know that in some instances, it's been frustrating for some and I completely understand that because we hear those complaints come through as we run our department. But this clarification, it really is important just to make sure that the residents fully understand what the responsibility is. And then we will continue to work on strengthening and improving our process with the trees that we have in, in our, in, in the right way that into, at times can, can cause issues with the sewer, sewer lines.
Thank you very much. I just want to clarify then, because I'm, I'm a little hesitant and I would like additional language added into this policy to make sure that that's clear. Because the pipes, although we offer the, the pruning and the derouting and eventually if the tree is sick, we do and eventually if the tree is sick, we do take down the tree as the city. But the pipes, if they're broken, the pipes then become the responsibility of the owner if they haven't, if they're within the perimeter of the picture that you showed us, correct? So the city doesn't offer the pipes to be fixed, or do they?
The city replace the, those were line on private property because it it's not working in the city's right of way. So anything in the city's right of way, obviously, is the city's responsibility. But the, what occurs on the homeowner's side is the homeless responsibility to maintain.
Okay, so that is where I do have a big concern. If anything, I would like to add, if the pipe that is attached to the main sewer line is broken, or if there is any roots damage that is caused by a city tree, I don't feel it should be the responsibility of the homeowner because the homeowner didn't plant the tree. And that is a huge issue in this city. I could best assure you, especially in the older neighborhoods, this is an issue that's happening, I could, I can almost rest assure you, at least ten people in the manor are going through this and I know Sunny Hills is going through it as well. So I don't feel comfortable with the language that's in this policy because it wouldn't allow discretion for staff and although it would provide a clear language of what they can and can't do, I would feel more comfortable adding language in there that states if there is damage done to the pipes, even if it's on the owner's side, then the city is going to take care of it, at least if it's with the tree, the tree roots. If the roots of the tree that belong to a city are causing pipe damage, not only to the main sewer line, but also to the line that moves into that homeowner's space, like the driveway area, I personally, especially because these homes belong to a lot of seniors, they don't have ten to fifteen thousand dollars to fix these pipes. And it's, it's become a huge issue in the city.
Thank you very much, would you like to yield your time, thank you for your comment, would you like to yield your time to the public hearing?
Not yet, because I think I still want some clarification in terms of staff. I want to make sure that if we could, we add a language that would say if the pipes are being obstructed or broken by a city tree, regardless of where they're at, then those pipes would be replaced by the city. Is that something that we could do today?
I see a virtual raised hand from our deputy city manager, Walter Osman, Walter.
Thank you, Mayor Tran, good evening, Mayor Councilman Dominguez and the rest of the council. And if the full council would like to pursue this approach, we'd have to take the ordinance back, we have to analyze the issue, figure out how this will topic of the right language like this, this will take some time.
Thank you very much, Walter, I will encourage for us to have a full conversation during this public hearing with all community members before we take any conclusive action. Councilmember Dominguez, would you like to yield your time?
At this point, yes, I would like to go ahead and open the public hearing.
Oh, the public hearing is, has been open, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to the chamber first, I don't see any further requests from the dais here, we'll go to the chamber. Mr. Monte Mayor, come on up.
Yeah, Walter Monte Mayor, oh, the last topic, it could be subsidized by the city, I believe so, as far as the expenses. Pocket money from the resident could be hard. Anyway, if you're, you're not following the order of the city, that that tree should be removed and you're not doing, you're doing things that rot in the pipe, then maybe you're in, it's your responsibility. And the drivers, you said driver is not really driving, the drives, of course, you, we don't want the clean water to be affected. Now, the process on the pipe, oh, we have home depot to help, we have instrument, we could regularly make the flow good from the sewer to the street, but you need two hundred bucks, they say twice a year, and that's all for my one minute, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir, I see no further requests from the chamber, we'll go to the virtual chamber on the Zoom platform, welcome, Joseph Weinstein.
Yes, thank you, mayor, I I'd like to get a couple of clarifications. One is it, Tony's saying that the homeowner will be responsible for getting it to the main sewer line. We, those sewer lines were built according to city codes and the homeowner shouldn't be responsible if the sewer line is broken anywhere past our private property. Second, the point's been made, not only are there city trees, but we bought our house in nineteen eighty and it was a requirement by the city on our entire block that we install trees against our wishes. So the city mandated trees, we brought up that in nineteen eighty when I bought our first house and the city ignored us. Third of all, this always ends up in inspections that are required by the city. There's a number of cities around here who require them for sales. The inspections are expensive and when the homeowner is responsible for it.
Thank you very much, sir, thank you very much, next up, we have Barbara Jo Navarro, welcome.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My home was built in nineteen seventy nine, I don't believe I have a tree problem, but I appreciate what Director Tony is stating. If he could do a program that would help us homeowners understand what maintenance of our house sewer line entails, that would be wonderful because I don't think I've done anything the whole time I've owned my house since nineteen ninety nine. So if there is some type of maintenance program that we should be doing within our sewer lines, it would be great if they let us know what it is. And then if they had some contractors that were certified that they had a list of that could help us with this, that would be good too. And I agree with Councilmember Karina in trying to make a statement about the tree roots and the pipelines. I think that it should be considered and subsidized at the minimum. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Barbara Jo, we'll go to the Zoom platform. I want to thank Mr. Weinstein and Barbara Jo. I've been to both of your homes, so I I can really understand with my own eyes your experience and I want to thank you for, I want to really thank you for sharing that tonight, so. Okay, it's the public hearing, folks, it's the public hearing. We have a number of items here on the agenda tonight, do a little time check, time check. And so I see no further virtual raised hands for the public hearing, none other in the chamber. And so I think my recommendation for tonight is to approve this ordinance. And if there's concerns about trees, I think our deputy city manager mentioned that, you know, it's a larger discussion and I'll ask the city manager on behalf of Councilmember Dominguez to kind of just take a look at that as we go forward. It would be good to get some information. We respect the trees. And so, yeah, that's my request, we'll keep it going here, it's item number twelve, public hearing, folks. Next up, Vice Mayor Montano.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. Elaine, can you put up the, that one slide about the resampling, updates to resampling? So, so help me understand, when they, when they sample the, the water or the, at the sewage treatment plant, or, well, that's what I want to know, do they sample the water at the sewage treatment plant? Or do they sample it in the conduits that are coming from our city to the treatment plant?
Actually, so Councilman Vice Mayor Montano, the sampling in this specific instance happens at the facility. So under these industrial pretreatment permits, these types of, these industrial facilities are required to treat their wastewater prior to it leaving their building and into, into the, into the sanitary collection system. So there are treatment systems in place and then also monitoring post-treatment but prior to discharge into the sanitary collection system. So this, this monitoring specifically happens on, on the side of the facility.
Okay, well, that's, and so I guess to me, it's, it, it doesn't make any sense that we should be penalized because from my understanding, the, the environmental, was it, they came and they did an audit at the plant and they found that there was, it was, the sampling was too high, right?
And so The, the EPA audited the program that San Jose was running and part of that program, the program audit looked at, you know, their legal authority to run the program, how, how they are actually running it. And so that's, it, it was a programmatic audit, not, not an audit of their, their discharge or the operations at the treatment facility itself. And so one of the, the programmatic findings was they could improve and clarify enforcement authority and when there are exceedances, what resampling has to happen at the facility prior to the water being discharged to our collection system.
I get, okay, I, I understand now. And then, I said twelve thousand gallons per day for, for facility for the manufacturing for each, each business, even the restaurants, that's the max?
We're increasing it from twelve thousand gallons per day to a hundred thousand. The twelve thousand was a legacy number that was, that that's pretty out of date.
Okay. And the discharge permits at, every restaurant, every business in Milpitas has to have a, just if, discharge permits then?
Um, the industrial facilities that have certain types of operations have to have a discharge permit, but food service establishments like restaurants or facilities that generate grease are subject to inspection, there isn't a permit, but, but we do have inspectors that go out and check on the facility and make sure they have good housekeeping and the right grease removal systems in place. Those inspections happen on, I think, a three-year cycle.
Okay, and then going back to the house to the main, so I was wondering why you didn't have a before and now you have what you're proposing, so I, you know, I would have been, I would have liked to have seen the, what was the previous code that we had. Because I, I do agree that, I think, I think that needs to come back as a separate issue about the house, the trees damaging the pipes and I think we, we as a city need to come up with some other type of plan. So, yeah, that, I, I do agree that the trees do cause a lot of damage to the pipelines. And if the, and the current one, the current plan that you have, it, it kind of makes the resident liable. So I, I'm, I'm having a hard time, so maybe we can come back with this and to just discuss it because there's, there's a lot of folks that do, that are affected by these trees. Maybe they can replant the tree or, I know right now, they can't, they can't cut the tree down.
I hear you, Vice Mayor, thank you, I, I want to follow up on your comments. You know, I think tree or no tree, tonight's focus is really on the pipeline. And I think it makes really good sense, you know, you got your city main pipeline and the pipe that goes from the house to the main city pipe, that's a uniform pipe there. You know, it's the same sort of diameter, it's the same specifications and it makes sense that the whole pipe from the house to the city main line should really be on the property owner. You know, I just, that is the primary pipeline that is existing on the property in a single family or however other type of home. You know, I know my pipes are nineteen seventy one, crossing my fingers, but, you know, even as a homeowner here in town, I, you know, I'm trying to look at it from an unbiased perspective and it just makes sense, the same grade pipe that's really, you know, kind of on the city property. It's installed in one piece like Legos, you know, you kind of connect one long piece to another and I know the pipe goes under the sidewalk, but, you know, it just makes sense that the actual connection of the pipe, you know, you talk to maybe someone from planning, it's sort of like an easement or something, what's the proper term? You know, sometimes there's boundaries that are shared, just like in real estate. And so the house pipe going from the house under the sidewalk, you know, even though it's kind of the property line, there's sort of an easement. I, I want to say that's the right word. And so that's the strategy that real estate uses, like with driveways. Sometimes driveways go into other properties to get to the primary property. So I'm just using that framework because in a way, it is real estate for the pipes. And so for that pipe to go under the sidewalk to the main line, I consider that private property. And I hear concerns about the, about the trees and I think that's a whole nother separate conversation. Let's think about the homes that don't have trees. This ordinance that's being agendized tonight would apply to that and we're removing a gray area with item number twelve tonight and we're giving our residents and our city staff more clarity on the work that they can do. This is an area that has had concerns in the past, that's why we have it before us tonight. So I, I really want to support this item tonight, I want to ask my colleagues as we go down the dais in this public hearing to accomplish this item. And I'm more than happy to bring back the tree to pipe conversation in the very short term, if that satisfies others. But I think the, the tree issue is really separate here from what we're looking at. The tree issue is a, a very important concern and is a priority, but Councilmember Dominguez, you could lower your hand, I'll get to you, you don't want to keep it up too long. And so the tree issue is a whole nother agenda item. I like to focus on the pipeline itself here. Okay, Vice Mayor?
I, I'd like to revisit this issue on the public median that is in front of a house where most of the, and it's mostly the older neighborhoods. I think that's, it's fair that we should revisit this at some point in time because that is a big issue.
Okay. Vice Mayor, do you want to keep the status quo of the ordinance? Or that is maybe another option?
Well, I'm, actually, I'm, I'm not going to vote for it because I didn't, I do, I wasn't able to see the previous code and I'm, I'm just going to abstain from this one here.
Okay, if, if you like the regulations the way they are, then that's an option as well, okay. We'll go down here, let's see, next up, we have Councilmember Dominguez.
Thank you very much, mayor. Policies affect people. Policies affect people, we are making a policy. And this policy is going to affect property owners, we are attacking property owners. It's an attack at property owners, that's what we're doing with this policy. By allowing this policy to go forward, we are allowing the language that is later on going to be a conversation of, well, that already passed, we can't do anything about it. Yet, we have this before us and we have had staff say we could bring the entire thing back and add a language to protect property owners from this flaw in this bureaucratic system that lacks common sense. That's really what it is, it lacks common sense. It's bureaucracy and an attack against working class people and are most vulnerable in our community. Ten thousand, fifteen thousand dollars could push an elderly to moving out of the city because they can't afford it. This has nothing to do with trees, but everything to do with equity. This has nothing to do with one big pipe. I've seen plenty of pipes been replaced, not only on my street, but in the city of Milpitas. And if you've lived here for at least twenty years, you know that our pipe system is one of the worst. It's breaking in different sectors at different times, so it's not just one big long pipe, it's different sectors. And we need to take this seriously. And I hope that those of you who are watching at home see that policies affect you and tonight, we have a policy before us that could potentially subsidize the fees that you are paying because the city tree broke your pipes. This is probably the third complaint, the biggest complaint in Milpitas. And if you know Milpitas and you've been living here for quite a while, this is our hometown. You will hear at least one person on each block complain about this and we have the opportunity. And we have the opportunity to change it. Now, do we have the willpower to change it? That's on us today. But I want to be very clear that if we don't postpone this item and bring it back with that language, we are attacking property owners. We are displacing our most vulnerable. And frankly, we don't care. Because all we're going to say is, oh, that already happened. We can't do anything about it. We're adding bureaucracy to a system that we monitor. It's up to us. I want to be very clear that I stand with our property owners in the city of Milpitas. I stand with our seniors. And if you did not plant that tree, you should not have to pay for any damage that tree causes on or off your property. This is not about real estate. And I understand, Mayor, that you're now in real estate and that's maybe your perspective. But I'll tell you this, my perspective is from the working class and those who have owned the homes in the city of Milpitas. And I've heard plenty that they feel there's too much red tape in this place already. So either we want to help our families or we don't. Personally, I will not be voting for this policy. Because the minute that we vote for a policy and we say, oh, we're going to bring it back. It never comes back. And if it does, it gets liquefied into something different. So we have to have a backbone for our families. It's Milpitas families first. This clearly is not a policy that puts Milpitas families first. It actually puts Milpitas families last. Because the families that have owned their home for the longest time in the city of Milpitas are going to be the ones that are confronted with these issues. Because our pipes are so old. That's not the responsibility of a property owner. That's the responsibility of this chamber. I just want to be very clear with those of us, those of you who are watching us. Thank you so much for taking the time. I stand with you. I don't think you should be paying any fees for any broken pipes on your property on the property line or not. These systems don't work for us, so it's time to change it. Thank you so much, Council, Council and Mayor for the time.
I thank you very much. Um. Certainly, there are a lot of real estate principles in play. Uh, whether it's real property or if it's a fixture. Uh, and so the pipelines on private property uh really uh under the Department of Real Estate, State of California can determine those things. Let's go to Walter Rossman, our Deputy City Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just would like to uh help the council withstand two items. One is uh we can obviously, if the council desires uh to advance, recommend advancing ordinance without addressing this particular issue, which is in discussion at this time. The reason why we need to remain advancing remaining ordinance to certain legal requirements, I believe, the later we can talk to those. Um, and uh just again to clarify, this is the just to clarify, the ordinance change which Councilor Dominguez is discussing with Vice Mayor Montana. These are actually uh changes which uh I sort of solidify or clarify existing practice. So we're going to definitely bring this item back in a broad discussion about trees. As the council so desires, but I do want to speak to us quickly speak to the items which we need to approve today.
Yes, thank you, Walter. The the changes that clarify the regulatory requirements for the industrial pre-treatment program that were initiated by San Jose, they have um per our agreement with San Jose for them to treat our wastewater. Um, we have, they have asked and directed that we make those changes to the code and have asked that those changes go in by the end of this calendar year. And so there are um, as Walter said, some legal requirements for advancing those those changes and and clarifying um, the 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 recommendations related to our our industrial pre-treatment program, as well as the fats, oils and grease program and the dental program.
Thank you very much, Lane. Let me ask a follow up question here. Let me let me take a new angle on this. Um. Uh, you know, what are other cities doing? Uh, is this proposal tonight or amendment to the ordinance going to be in line with other cities in the county? Um, you know, let's take a let's take a bigger picture here. Um, do we have that information? If not, I'll I'll support the Vice Mayor. We'll we'll bring this back. I know there's a timeline on this, but um let's see what other cities are doing here in this situation with the pipe connection, uh unless we have information now. Anybody?
Elaine, Tony.
Um, so Mayor, I I think it's important here. Um, we're looking at the two different issues issues here. One is the um, the item that we're talking about for the sewer code changes to it to stay in line with the changes that from the city of San Jose to stay in compliance with regulations. So if the the answer to that question is um all the tributary agencies um per our agreement with San Jose have been asked to adopt the same changes um in order for us to stay in compliance with the regulatory law. So um so that issue um is consistent with other what other folks are doing. Now, the issue regarding uh trees and the tree roots impact on the um on the sewer line, um the city is u- unique in a sense uh on that. So it's 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 not something that we can really benchmark with a lot of other cities. So um that is an item as as Deputy um City Manager Walter Rossman talked about is an item that we can table for today and bring that back to have a separate discussion just on that item because it is a separate issue.
Yeah, it's separate. Yeah, it's called the tributary agencies. I like uh uniformity uh in some cases when it comes to sewer for sure. And so um, okay, so that's agendized. It's the public hearing. Um, I see a virtual raised hand since the public hearing is open. Let's go to Jane Yu. Welcome, Jane. One minute.
Hi, um, I wasn't sure if I had missed the other topic because I came in a little late about the rent reduction program. Is it?
Yeah, I want you to stand by. That's uh that's later on in the meeting.
Oh, okay. All right. Uh, thank you.
Party. You're at the wrong party. Yeah, stand by. Okay, great. This is the sewer party. Okay. All right, uh, stay with us, Jane. We're here. Stay with us. We're in the right place. Wrong door. Okay, great. All right. So thank you for the um explanation, Tony. Let's go to the Vice Mayor, Carmen Montano.
Thank you, Mayor. So I would like to um make a motion to accept the recommendation.
Let me pause it right there. Let me move to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Let me move to close the public hearing. Hearing no objections, hearing no objections. The public hearing is now closed. Back to you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the staff's recommendation, however, to remove that one item of the house to the main, bring that back so we can discuss it more into depth.
Well, I think um. I think that's what the item is entirely about.
No, you can take that item.
Is it? I let's go to Tony here, Elaine. Some point information or point inquiry.
Yes, um, I Vice Mayor, I believe the section you're referring to is um Title eight dash two dash thirteen point zero two maintenance by user. And so I think you're 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 right. Your suggestion is to remove that section from this action tonight.
Yeah, that's the one that you had the diagram of the sewer line to the house. Yeah.
And before you make the motion, let's go to our city attorney for things he shall read.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to pause to see that section in the ordinance to see if it's easily can be removed at your direction, if that's the direction of the council tonight. Lane, can you tell me what page that is on?
It's on page uh in the council packet. It's page four ninety one. In the red line ordinance, it's page thirty one.
In that section eighteen correctly? Of the ordinance?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. So Mayor, let me go ahead and read the title. And if it's the direction of the council, we will remove section eighteen in the ordinance and renumber all remaining sections consecutively. Let me get to the title. So what you have before you is ordinance number two oh eight point fifty four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Milpitas amending various sections of Title eight, chapter two of the Milpitas Municipal Code relating to sewer operation and maintenance. And we'd be looking for a motion to introduce the ordinance with the modification to delete section eighteen and wait further reading beyond the title.
Yes, that's correct. So I guess I need a second.
Second, second, second. Okay. Um. Thank you for your leadership on this one, Vice Mayor. Uh. You know, I think uh this is this is the right thing to do. So we have a motion by the Vice Mayor. We have a second by myself. I'll call the question. Uh, all in favor will go to the vote.
Councilmember Chuah.
Hi.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Nay.
Councilmember Fan.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Montana.
Hi.
Mayor Chan.
Hi. Thank you very much, Wendy. That's the vote. The motion is carried. Uh, the item is approved as stated by the city attorney. A lot of work to still do on that one, so I'm looking forward to bringing that back. Okay, fantastic. Uh, we'll move on to item number seventeen, which was moved up here. Receive a report on the status of citywide landscape and parks maintenance and provide direction to staff on desired service levels and recommended service enhancement strategies. Uh, not going too far here. Back to our Director of Public Works, Tony Enda.
Actually, Mayor, I will take the first stab at this item. So if you could bring up the PowerPoint, please. So over the last decade, the city maintained parks, trees and streetscape, which includes medians through various service delivery models. Due to budget constraints, the funding to contain these public areas has not been sufficient given the service level expected by the council and members of our community. Insufficient funding to achieve an expected service level became quite apparent this summer, which is exacerbated by temporary issues such as staff vacancies, delays in hiring, delays in contracting out the maintenance of about twelve percent of city's park acreage as approved by the council in twenty twenty, and delays in contracting out for a one-time redevelopment contract primarily due to meter confer process with one of the city's bargaining units. As you will hear tonight, staff are working to address these temperations. And in preparation for the next budget season, which you mentioned tonight, staff seeks feedback from the council, the service level for parks, treats, the streets, give maintenance you desire. With that said, Mr. Enda, Public Works Director will provide the council members of the public with a status update on national benchmarks for the services, as well as next steps to facilitate council discussion.
Thank you, Walter. I'll ask for the next slide, please. And next slide. So walking through a little bit of history here, as Walter previously mentioned, going back to two thousand and twelve. So want to bring bring the memory back to then. Uh, prior to two thousand and twelve, maintenance of um our city's street maintenance, park maintenance and trees and landscape were all done by in-house staff. We have over thirty five uh plus staff members working that in that so those efforts there. And then in two thousand, July, two thousand and twelve, we had the unfortunate situation here in the city where we went through some really tough budget challenges. And uh a lot lots of funding, which required us to make some really tough decisions. Um, but and part of that, those decisions were to contract out the park maintenance for the city on a five year contract. And then also to to contract out the trees and landscape maintenance um to the in the city. So in July of twenty seventeen, which is fiscal year eighteen, council approved the addition of nine staff members back into the Streets Department and approved the addition of seven uh full time employees to handle trees and landscape maintenance in the city, which included the landscape maintenance on the city's right of way medians and in the right of way areas. And then in October of that same year, um, the city issued a contract with Brightview for the maintenance of twenty six parks. Now, this was a contract that's put in place in order to um continue the city's practice of maintaining uh parks by an outside contractor, and that was done for five years. It's important to note that during that time, prior to um the council approval of this item back in October twenty seventeen, the seat initially did go out for a contract for the maintenance of all city parks back in April of twenty seventeen. When those bids came back, the price um of the bids that we did receive exceeded what was approved at that time for parks maintenance. So in order to to utilize the funds that had been approved at that time, the scope of work was changed, which included removing certain items of the scope of work, plus reducing the park numbers by ten and leaving and pushing those ten maintenance of those ten parks onto city staff, the new city staff members that were just hired back in July of twenty seventeen. Go to the next slide. So as we went through the years, we started noticing that there were some service level deficiencies um and as early as early as then. And this was due to the uh the ten parks that the city staff had to maintain, which were not in which were not part of the plan in the first place when uh the staff was put together. Uh, and for the fiscal year twenty twenty, uh council approved the addition of one F T E to add to the tree tree maintenance, uh creating a tree crew for the first time. And also approved the addition of four seasonal maintenance workers to assist with those peaks that we sometimes see in our weed abatement season. In addition to all this, council also approved funding um for the contracting out of the remaining ten parks for the city with the aim of ensuring that there's consistency with our park maintenance, plus the staff members that were stretched, having to maintain these ten parks can now focus their attention on improve on increasing the service level for weed abatement in the city. So then in March of twenty twenty, uh council did approve a contract with Brightview uh for all the maintenance of all thirty six parks. That price came out to about one point six million. And if you do a breakdown of that, the twenty six parks, which is about eighty eight percent of the park uh system that we have was about one point two million. And the maintenance for the ten parks uh was about twelve percent of the park acreage was about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We did get a grievance from eh from M E A in March of that same year um at citing a lack of meet and confer. So we ended up at that time when we did issue the contract and approve the contract, uh provided notice proceed, we provided a notice proceed for twenty six of those parks. And we put the uh ten parks remaining with city staff for maintenance pending the meet and confer process. I also just wanted to note here too that in the in in addition to the ten parks that uh are now being maintained by in-house staff, we also brought on our new skate park. And uh council did approve operating fund budgets for us to for staff to maintain those. But again, it's additional load that's being added on to our staff to maintain. Let's go to the next slide. And one more. So I wanted to give everyone a snapshot of the team that is in charge of maintaining your city trees and your landscape maintenance in the city. I'll start with at the very top of the screen there, we have our senior lead who uh is a working working senior lead uh in in the staff. They do uh office work in terms of scheduling the the work and working with the manager to prioritize what work needs to come first. But they also are able to keep very able and capable of going out in the field themselves and really getting dirty and getting work done too. So we're proud of what they are able to accomplish. On our tree side, we have two members of our staff that work on service requests. So we do have a contract with West Coast Arborist. They do our block pruning and they do our grid pruning throughout the city. If you recall, count council did approve as part of this year's budget, the addition of funds to allow us to increase that frequency of pruning. Previously, we were improving trees on a five year cycle. Now we're able to prune those trees on a four year cycle, which allows us to get to them a lot quicker than we were in the past. But we also have two staff members who responsibility is taking those service requests that we do receive from the public and going out there investigating them and then chopping off some of the limbs here and there to address the the major concerns prior to us having to do block pruning in those areas. Now on to the to the left to the for the right of my screen uh or under landscape maintenance sections are the remaining five members that are in charge of landscape maintenance in the city. This is the maintenance of all street need of sharp medians, maintain of all the open right of way in the city. So these five staff members work on doing all that work there. In addition to that, we have approval, like I mentioned in the previous slide, four seasonal makes maintenance workers were they coming on board in those peak seasons, mostly mostly between April um through September and helping with some of those peak weed seasons as they come up during that time. Uh, I do also want to note that as part of the uh ARPA discussions, council did approve the addition of ninety thousand dollars into the budget for the Public Works Department. And we'll be using that to add three more seasonal maintenance workers to the crew, bringing that total number to seven when we're completed with the hiring. This will allow for some extra hands on board to help with getting us caught up on the weed abatement season that we're currently going under. Next slide, please. So just to give uh folks an idea of the workload and the work activities that this team uh does does perform. So for a calendar year twenty twenty, which was last year, our tree maintenance crews uh received four hundred and seventy requests for tree services throughout the city. And so far this year for twenty twenty one, we received three hundred and sixty of these of of such requests. Our landscape maintenance crews are in charge of about a hundred and thirty two acres of street medians and open spaces throughout the city. Their work includes herbicide applications. This is a pre and post emergent, allowing us to um they allow us to deaden the seeds before they even germinate. They also do the work on all our irrigation repairs and all our street medians. They perform the landscape maintenance on the lands on the landscape meetings that we do have, may also perform weed abatement throughout the city. Uh, currently, uh until we Currently, until we complete the meet and confer process, they are responsible for maintenance of our city parks, about twenty-two acres of those, which constitutes about twelve percent of our total park acreage. The daily activities for our park maintenance include opening of the restrooms, cleaning them, trash disposal, and cleaning of the skate park to ensure that the skaters that do go out there are able to skate and enjoy themselves as the city did plan and design. And Wednesdays are our mow days. So Wednesdays, we do, we do take a break from our landscape maintenance throughout the city, and we take a pause, and we go to our parks, and we do all our mowing and our landscaping on Wednesday. So Wednesday is what we call our mow days. Next slide. So some updates for you. So we, so we became very aware, and as we've been having discussions with a lot of council and the requests coming from the city, city residents, about the, the maintenance issues that we're experiencing with weed abatement throughout the city this year in particular. Couple of measures that we put in place to address this include some of the following. We temporarily assigned staff from our Streets Department to join up our landscape crew. This allowed us to reallocate ten staff members to add into the fire that we already have, making contingent about fifteen people addressing weeds throughout the city. We really got a lot of stuff done just by doing that. We've had authorization for overtime throughout the department for many, many months now. So you'll see the crews working Fridays, Saturdays, and sometimes even on Sundays, coming in and addressing weed abatement issues throughout the city. Like Walter mentioned, early on, we issued a contract working with the unions on meet and confer process for a small contract for weed abatement services that recently got approved, and we'll be using those efforts here very shortly, in the, probably next week, as soon as next week, to start addressing some of the key areas in the city. And then we're working very close with our HR departments. We've been doing an amazing job of working through, getting the recruitment taken care of for us. We have a staff member ready to come on board as early as next week, fingers crossed there. And we're still working through our background and medical clearance for that. And then we're also working on onboarding our seasonals, expecting to have them onboard with us sometime mid-November. We're also looking at other ways of leveraging volunteer programs and other free programs that are available out in the public. So the Sheriff's Work Program is one of the programs that we're looking at utilizing. We're looking, working on our Finance Department, our Risk Management, to ensure that bringing folks, bringing this effort into the city will be safe for us to do. But with this program, it will allow some extra hands to help with doing some cleanup of weeds in certain areas of the city, leaves that have been deposited in certain areas, and even doing some pickups of trash here and there in the city. So we're hoping that we can get through this process and utilize these efforts as well. Let's go to the next slide. So for our tree, tree, sorry, for our streetscape maintenance, what we've, the workload that we've received so far this year, to give folks an idea of where we're at, is about a hundred and twenty-five service requests were received. We've closed about fifty-nine of those to date, and about fourteen major areas are still left to go. The sizes of these vary. So it's really tough to put down in terms of acreage where we are. In terms of major work items that we've completed so far, we recently completed the median work over at Great Mall Parkway. That's a very large median that we had to take care of, and it looks, we've gotten a lot of work done through there. North and south of Abel Street's been completed. Montague Expressway was quite an effort for us because of all the traffic control we had to put in place. That effort's been done. And then we've also completed major work on the Sinclair and McCarthy LMDs. Those are just the major items that we've done. We've also had a lot of smaller offshoot work that we're doing here and there. Currently, staff are working on North Mill Peters Boulevard, so you'll see them as you drive by, and they're doing work on there. Go to the next slide. So now we want to talk a little bit about benchmarks that we can establish. Now, benchmarks really help with helping from a policy level, establishing what type of ratios we want to establish for maintenance. What service level do we want to pick for our city? And what does that translate to in terms of acreage to FTEs that we should be providing to help maintain those standards? We are looking at, we utilize, after doing research, we're utilizing the APPA Ground Maintenance Operation. That stands for the Association of Physical Plant Administrators. And we're using that standard as a means for us to establish service levels for our city, and we'll have those discussions here later on, where council then select what level of service we want to establish. I won't go through and read every single one of these bullet items here, or these one of the stable items here, but you'll see there, levels one through five are included on that, on the table. And each one of those levels is associated with a service description. For example, we have a service level one, which is state-of-art maintenance, associated with high-traffic urban areas. And with that, it requires one maintenance worker for every twenty acres of land that needs to be maintained. Now, it's important to note here that when you're talking about medians, not every section of your median is vegetated. So when we're talking about twenty acres, it's usually a mix between some hardscape and some vegetation in there as well. So that's why we have some of the numbers looking fair, looking high the way they are right here. Let's go to the next slide. So putting that in relation to the staffing, so if you take the hundred and thirty-two acres that we talked about earlier, that are staff responsible for maintaining, and you look at those ratios that we have from APPA, at a level-one service level, you're required to have seven FTE. Now, we have five currently. So with seven FTE required, that translates to the need for additional two FTE to maintain a service level one per these standards that we're looking at under APPA. And service level two would require six FTE, and we're, again, we have five. So we would have to, we have to add additional one FTE to maintain that level of standard. And again, service level three being the five FTE, we do have five now, so no additional staff would be required there. Now, it's important to note, even though we do have the five FTE currently in place right now, our staff are not able to maintain the street medians at a service level three because they are currently stretched due to some vacancies that we've had in the department. Some folks have had to go off on leave due to some medical issues. Plus, we have the ten parks that we also have to maintain as well. That, that stretched the department's effort or the staff's efforts a lot thinner. So we're currently maintaining street landscape maintenance at a level three and lower. So this is really important to note that. Next slide. So another, other considerations that we wanted to present today are some CIP considerations. So we've got, we just got done talking about the staffing consideration that we could, we could utilize to increase service levels for our trees and landscape, for landscape medians in the city. But other options that we have as well, some CIP considerations. The first one that we put on here was a median landscape standard. Now, when you go through the city, or developments come through, a lot of the medians in the city look in many different ways. And, you know, I always like to say that, you know, when you, when you put together a landscape on drawing, it looks really beautiful, but then reality kicks in, you've got to maintain it. So having a standard set in place that really gives, from the get, from the get-go, low-maintenance, low-water-use alternatives, and adopted by our council, really will help with ensuring that as we bring in new areas into the city or as we change over areas in the city, which is bullet point number two down there, and we do any kind of conversion in the city, we're making sure that we're keeping in mind from day one that we do these improvements, what the dollar amount's going to be for us to maintain these in perpetuity. It's a really important aspect of doing that. So again, the first aspect here is really bringing a professional landscape architect onboard to look at our, look at our city, look and see what vegetation would work best here in our city, and designing options for us, for us to consider for a low-maintenance, low-water-use landscape medians. Then we move on to step two, which should be approving certain projects or proposing certain projects for conversion of some of these high-maintenance, high-water-use medians into low-maintenance, low-water-use medians in the city. We think this approach here will really look, look years and years down the line and provide the city with a lot of stability in terms of putting in designs that'll cost the taxpayers here in the city a lot of money down the line. The other item here from the CIP that we're looking at proposing or for your consideration is irrigation assessments and repairs in the city. Irrigation, in addition to just being able to keep the water, keep the water going and water our medians, also helps very, very well with the pre and post-emergent applications that we do. When we do apply those pre and post-emergents onto the ground to prevent any seeds, any weed seeds from germinating, not having a good working irrigation system doesn't allow for that water to soak that, to soak this, to soak that pre and post-emergent into the ground to kill the seeds before they germinate. So having a project in place to assess our system and do necessary repairs will go a long way, not just to make sure that the green plants that we put on there remain green, but also to ensure that the pre and post-emergent that we apply into the ground has a way to work into the ground and be successful. So I'm going to pause here before we move on to the parks discussion and see, Mayor, if we can take any questions that may be coming from folks regarding streetscape maintenance in the city.
Yeah, I think we're really receiving this presentation. I'm fine with finishing it, or we can pause here. The Vice Mayor has a request.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I really love this streetscape because you're planning ahead for future generations, for future years, having drought, what do you call it, drought-tolerant plants, maybe a drip system, not sure. But I, I think that it's time that we need to start thinking about long-term and how we can do some cost savings because right now the weeds are horrible in different sectors of the city. And I think it's time that we need to visit this and start making some conversion, conversions to some of the sites, especially the medians. That's it. Thank you.
Yes, we have it right before us tonight. I'd like to, in interest of time, have Tony carry on here, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So next slide, please. So, so we're using, using the same approach for park maintenance. Now, we're using, we're using standards established by the National Recreation and Parks Association. And we've also, in addition to using these standards, we've, we've looked at staff hours that would be required to maintain parks at these service levels. And the hours that we did establish also line up well with these maintenance standards. So we feel pretty good about using this made and standard for our parks. This, again, is broken up similar to what we discussed earlier with setting up as a level A through D, with level A being the highest, associated with high-traffic urban areas, state-of-art maintenance. And this translates to a requirement to have four to six acres of parkland for one maintenance worker. And then level B being the next tier down the way there, with one maintenance worker in charge of about six to ten acres of parkland. Let's go to the next slide, please. So as, as we, as we continued to, as we continued along the slide here, we currently have a contract with, with Brightview, who maintains twenty-six of our city parks. Now, based on, now, the contract with Brightview doesn't call out particular service levels because we have not adopted service levels for the city. But based on discussions with Brightview during the bidding process, plus the scope of work that we did establish for them and the staffing levels that they did commit to providing as part of this program, they're able to maintain our parks, the twenty-six parks that they are in charge of maintaining, at a level B or higher. So the staffing levels plus the scope of work that we have established for them puts us at a, at a high level B and sometimes in a level A. So we were able to maintain the city parks in that level. What we want to do is achieve that same level of maintenance and care for all the city parks. So when we look at the ten city parks that city staff maintains, because of the staff shortages, because of the additional work that they're having to do, i.e. the skate park maintenance plus the landscape maintenance, our city staff with the ten parks that we're maintaining is consistent with level C and lower. Again, primarily due to being stretched and not able to maintain the proper staff-to-acreage ratio. Next slide. So our staff recommendation for the parks maintenance, again, is to continue on with council direction from two thousand and twenty to, which, which, again, council provided funding or approved funding at that time for outsourcing the park maintenance pending the meet and confer process with, with the unions. The goal there, again, stays the same, consistency with our park maintenance, of making sure that parks in one side or parks in the area are all maintained at the same level. It standardizes our efficiency and improves service levels, and results in net, net cost savings. So we're looking at a net cost savings of anywhere from three hundred to six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, depending on what service level council ultimately picks with discussions tonight. Following the meet and confer process with, with, with the unions, we will be able to successfully move and have the staff levels that we have in trees and landscape, trees and landscape to focus on the landscape maintenance piece of it and not have to be torn and losing time that we currently maintain in the parks. So this, again, is about consistency, efficiency, and net cost savings. That's, next slide. So on our next steps, again, meeting with it, with the unions to complete the meet and confer process, we are going to be working onboarding authorized staff. We have one more full-time employee to go and six seasonal maintenance workers left to hire on, so we'll be working onboarding them. We have our fall seasons right here. It's getting a lot, getting darker sooner, a lot colder sooner, so fall season is here. So we will be, we will be looking to start our pre and post-emergent application for the fall season. And then when springtime rolls around, we'll go and do that as well. And then following any discussions tonight, we'll return to council with any appropriate actions needed. And with that, we can bring up the recommendation slide, and I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Tony. I am ecstatic to see this item here on our agenda tonight. Really, the origins of this item are from a really grassroots effort by the Vice Mayor, Carmen Montana with hashtag beautify Mill Peters, along with Evelyn Chua. I see those two in the community often. And it started off, you know, kind of a little bit of volunteering here and there, and it turned into some beautify Mill Peters neon vests. And then, you know, I think there was definitely a talk around the town about the issues we have with weed abatement and landscaping. And as you mentioned, Tony, you know, it's kind of some things that, like, it's a perfect storm of not things we want, you know, even things beyond our control. So I want to take a moment here to thank, first, the NEA and all the folks at Public Works. Probably some of you tuning in here, we got your back, and we appreciate the work everybody does in NEA and Public Works. And so this was never really about anyone in particular when I think something's not so great in this case. I actually will take full responsibility for anybody in the community that would like to provide any input or feedback on our weed abatement and landscaping. I'll take full responsibility right now, but we have no excuses here. Probably a lot, a lot, a lot of excuses these days in light of the recession and the pandemic, but we have none. We're going to work with what we have, and we're going to get it for, we're going to get it done for our residents. But definitely, we brought this to City Hall in August, I think it was. And here we are in October, so just really ecstatic and positive about city council considering staff's recommendations. I want to first say that I'm very pleased with the additional recommended, I think, level one across the board for me, additional FTEs for Public Works. I think that's a long-term solution to have additional FTEs for Public Works in the organizational chart that you showed, Tony. The seasonal workers are going to help. That's a great way for us to gauge some prospective FTEs. And I want to thank the NEA for their support. You know, I'm very close with the NEA. I probably got more, you know, less degrees of separation to the NEA than any other bargaining group here in town. And so less degrees of separation. I really feel like, you know, they're like family. But thank you to the NEA for agreeing to the procured contract. I think that's going to be instant work. Tony, when would that start? Maybe remind the public, when would the procured contract begin, and when would it end?
I think that question, Mayor, we have made contact with the, with the vendor this week. We're scheduling our kickoff meeting later this week, if not early next week, and we should be able to have something going right away. They're itching to go, so it won't be much time left until they get going.
They're itching to go, yep. And there's like a, there's a sort of an end date to that procured contract, too. Like, if you can explain, or pardon me, further describe the end date and also what's entailed with the contract.
That's, that's correct, Mayor. The, the work, the work for the contract needs to be done by the third week of November. So November twenty-first is the end date. That's in the contract. So November 21st is the end date that's in the contract. In the contract, it's limited to a certain amount of work that can be done. It's measured in units of 100 square feet. And we are approved for 2,200 square feet of work, 2,200 units of work. And each unit is a, it's about, each unit is about 100 square feet.
Thank you very much. That's instant beautification before Thanksgiving. I think that's that's huge and. I feel confident in my collaboration with the MEA, knowing that we're adding some FTEs. And you know, we're going to keep an eye on that too for all the MEA folks out there who may be watching. We're going to keep an eye on that. We're going to work really strongly to ensure those positions are filled. Despite some of the labor shortages, you know, I commit myself to. Working with our council and city manager to ensure those positions are filled and that we're making Mill Peters beautiful. So yeah, those are my comments. I I I'm going to advocate for the level of. FTEs to be at the highest level. And I really do think that our city is going to be looking great come the holidays to what we're accustomed to living here so long and. If there needs to be more. Discussion, then we'll take a look at our mid year. We'll just take a look. Okay, next up, we have council member Chua.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. Tony, you are asking two things from ours, from us, right? One is if you kindly put up the recommendations. What type of service level we want you to deliver to the residents? That's one, right?
That is correct.
Okay, and. So that's number two on the recommendation. What type of service level we expect you to to deliver to the residents and. And how are we going to staff that? Is that, are those the two? Can you please clarify?
That is absolutely correct, Councilman Rituwa. Yes, our 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 intent is first for you folks to receive, sorry. For council to receive the report tonight and then based on information that we have presented. We like direction on what desired service level council want to see, given the amount of resources required. For for that level of service and resources obviously being personnel and contract and or contract services.
Okay, perfect. Can you please put up the. The AP, P A E service level, the different types? So we can answer your questions. Question number two. This one.
We'll start here with streetscape maintenance.
So you mentioned that we're in between level two and three on some of our parks. And some of our other parks are between level three and four, correct?
Let me go and have have the slide switch to the park landscape matrix, which is an A through D.
Oh, that one, yeah.
We'll go a few slides down. One more.
One more, yeah.
Thank you.
There you go. So if I heard you correctly, on some parks were between B and C. And the other parks are, I didn't hear it, D. So it must be between B and C, correct?
So the parks that are maintained by our contractor, and then this is, again, this is a. You know, the the contract itself doesn't call out a level of service because this wasn't part of the discussion and thought process then. But we do have a detailed scope of work and as part of the contracting process where we brought them on board. We inquired from the vendor what staffing levels they would provide, so provide. So based on the information they provided on the staffing levels, plus the scope of work that we have in place with them. We equated that to, we were able to analyze that and and see that they're providing a high level B and higher. So we're looking at about close to the six acres per per FTE and higher.
I see.
Quality of care. Now, the the other discussion I mentioned was the standard of care that. We have for the 10 parks that are being maintained by city staff. That standard of care currently is a level C and lower, primarily due to the fact that the staff, this staff. Their job is not just primarily park maintenance, it's park maintenance, it's streetscape.
I get you. They're 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 thinly spread out.
That is correct.
Okay, I got it. So for, so I would go. I I like your other suggestions on other ways to to maintain our our parks. By going after, you know, less, less. Well, I mean, getting plants that will last longer, less. Plants that are drought tolerant. I like those. So to answer your, to make it, to make this faster. I'm going to go with level one. And also, I, on both your recommendations, I think I will go with those. Those are good recommendations and we hope to see more of our. Parks to be well maintained. And with the ARPA being, we're bringing up our our 12 other parks that are not usable. Or or unsafe to to a fair status. So I'm looking forward to that one as well. Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Chua. Was that level A I heard? Is that? A, okay, A1, okay. All right, all right. All right, next up, we have council member Fan.
Thank you. So. I think. I am reluctant. When it comes to the the FTE requests, not so much concerning. The need or the the service or anything like that. But I think when it comes to requests like these, it gets a little complicated because it does come down to an allocation of resources. And I recall when we had our budget discussion. There were a number of FTE requests that we had to. You know, express restraint. Fiscal restraint on due to the economics. In multiple departments, but I I do recall safety being one of them. And that when the time would come, should, you know, the budget. Financials look better, that we would revisit some of these other FTEs. I'm not sure if, you know, need has changed over the last several months. But when it comes down to requests like these, I do want to make it an equitable process. Because oftentimes it's one of those things where, you know, if if you request it first, then, you know. The rest of the. Organization misses out on that opportunity. So I I do want to make sure that if we are considering FTE requests. For for mid year budget, that we open it up for other departments as well, make it fair. That's my only thoughts on that. I I do. Support a lot of the. The items that were mentioned earlier and really thank Public Works for all their hard work.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Fan. And before we go to the next speaker, I do want to also add prior, I failed to mention. I think I would like to work with the MEA. And negotiate for us to contract the parks fully so that our MEA folks, our Public Works folks can. Go from the parks to the landscape and the streetscape, and that way they can really maintain their expertise. In specific duties rather than to be jumping back and forth. I remember my time in the National Guard on the yard, doing different tasks. MHE and stuff, and it was always a little bit disruptive to jump over specializations. And next up, we have the vice mayor, Carmen Montana.
Thank you, Mayor. So I appreciate council member Fan's remarks. However, I wanted to remind folks that MEA has always been. Shortchanged, I guess, if you will. They've always gotten the end of, short end of the stick with, in regards to staffing. And I support this. And not only, not only that reason, it's because it's seasonal. Right now, we have so many weeds in our city and I've gotten so many complaints from people that. Our city is not looking like it should be. And the other reason is that. We need to make sure that our city is beautiful. We need to take pride in our city. And if we need to do this, I I I'm all for it. And I think even having that, you know, that I was thinking about the adopt a park program. You know, we can take ownership. Citizens love to volunteer and make sure that our cities are, our parks are kept clean. And I know we can't mow the lawn, but because it's so huge, but you know, little things like picking up trash and. We can always be part of our city to make sure that it's, you know, we take ownership of it. We want to keep our bottom lines. We want to make sure our city is beautiful and take pride in it. So I do agree with this, this plan. And I want to make them, if no one else has any any other remarks, I'd like to make a motion to approve this staff's recommendation.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Montana. I appreciate your comments. Alright on. Next up, we have council member Dominguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor, for acknowledging that I was on the queue. I really do appreciate that and it's noted. Um, I definitely agree, you know, definitely we we have our challenges with maintenance. And we definitely have those concerns. You know, I just want to be cautious also. First times, it just feels like, what are our priorities? I honestly keep hearing for some items, we don't have money. For other items, it just feels like it bypasses the process and it happens within 90 days and we have an ice skating rink. But yet, we have safety issues, we have weed issues. So I think just for for my purpose, it would be great to just try to stay on point with our priorities. I do feel like we lose track of what our priorities are. And we kind of don't finish something that we started. And I do think that that's why we are in this dilemma with this weed issue. I personally. Want to stop the speeding in our city. I want to stop the donuts, something that we have been championing for the past year and a half. We need mitigation for traffic because speeding is happening and it's dangerous. So when we've had a conversation about safety. I definitely just want to acknowledge a process that is something we could all follow. And that it is available for the public to see what are the priorities of this council. Weed abatement definitely is something that I am concerned about. I know that our office has adopted a couple of parcels in Mill Peters and I personally have been cleaning and learning. How to maintain our parks and our, some of our areas. Which I think the program to adopt the park is a great program. Again, I I completely support this if MEA and the union support it. I have to be very cautious on that because I know that a couple of years ago, we did subcontract out and that did not turn out. It sounds like to be the best. So I am cautious for public workers. And I am very cautious of subcontracting out positions, even if it's going to be part time or seasonal. So that's the only, definitely I would want MEA to be part of the conversation and I would like to know what they say in that conversation. Again, I think the level of service in Mill Peters, we do have some challenges like any other city. But when I cross over five other cities, I could best assure you, Mill Peters weeds are not the worst. That doesn't mean that they can't be the best. So I would love to definitely see a service level of number one with caution of. Of subcontracting out full time positions. I definitely want to be clear, that's not something I support. And unless MEA supports it and those conversations with the union move swiftly. And so I personally think we could move forward with an adopt park program. I think that would definitely be something, although I have attended the the park cleanups. And something that I've noticed is our parks are actually pretty clean. The parts that are not as clean are like by the railroads, side parts, and so. I know that those are harder to get to on community events because of the safety issue. But I do want to acknowledge and give our Public Works Department some kudos because. When we have these cleaning events and we're out there for three to four hours and people are done in 30 minutes and they're literally. I I hate to say it, I was at one cleanup event and I think I had more trash in my car than the whole park in itself. Which was so bad. I was like, oh my God, I literally collected more trash out of my car because of the weak Starbucks and all of that that we collect. So our parks are pretty clean. The parts that are are fairly challenging are are other parts, which I think. Is something we are working together, but I do want to note that, you know, having attended at least three to four cleanup events. I don't feel that that's the issue as much as maybe our residential areas or our big street areas or even our business and commercial areas. So I would like to see maybe more cleanups at our business commercial areas. I know that they're private areas, but we could collaborate with them. Because I think that they're having their own challenges trying to maintain their business. So that is my feedback on this in terms of the level of. You know, it was definitely number one, that's where we want. But you know, I would definitely also explore other areas and again, caution against subcontracting out. Full time positions, depending on the conversation that of what happens with the union. Thank you so much.
Love the support. Thank you very much. Let's beautify Mill Peters. And we'll go to the vice mayor, Carmen Montana.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a shout out to the crew that came and cleaned up. We had like 10 bags of trash this past weekend. Great Mall Parkway view passed on that street. It was, it's been always a lot of trash. The wind just blows it, but thank you so much for cleaning up, for picking up all the trash bags that were there this weekend. But with that, I'd like to make a recommendation, a motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Absolutely. We'll accept the recommendations and really at this moment, we have the motion from the vice mayor. Direct staff here to go all down the line with procured contract and. The additional FTEs at service level A or one, which is should be the equivalent. With seasonal workers. Let's see, what am I forgetting here? The parks separating, you know, getting our Public Works FTEs off of the parks so that they can focus on. A specialization rather than different specializations or multiple specializations. But Tony, how does that sound so far? And working with the MEA.
Let me jump in, Mayor. That would be, we understand you would like to serve server one or A depending on the landscape, the maintenance issues. And that's a feedback we asked you to write to us. The next steps, we outlined a few of those for you for the council. It really becomes a discussion of the next budget process, which starts in January. We're going to kick off the preliminary budget study session and we'll probably bring some information at that time.
Is that January?
It's January, end of January, correct.
Okay, that works. And so what's instant here?
It's getting a service level input from the council and you should.
Can you repeat that, please? I'm sorry. You you cut me off there. Pick you up what you're saying. I was still thinking in my head. Okay, go ahead, Walter.
So the feedback is the service level, sort of A or one depending on the landscape we're looking at.
Okay, great, yeah. I think we had a consensus for for what you just said. But I think instantly here. But I think instantly here, the city is in a dire, dire time right now. I think folks that have been here, you know, 20, 30 years ago, understand it's a serious issue. So what are we getting today? It's procured contract, seasonal workers. What else? Maybe I'll go to Tony.
Thank you, Mayor. So the procured contract is already in place. So that's not party actions today. The approval for the additional seasonal maintenance workers that came as part of our, that already happened. So it's just a matter now of going through our process and onboarding the staff once they go through the recruitment process. So all that's in motion. In terms of what we came here to do today, to get solid direction on on what levels of service you would decide. Sounds like we are getting that clear direction from council on that. And then we're also, we also, it sounds like we're getting clear direction from council to continue on with the meet and confer process for the 10 parks. Aside from that, I think with the recommendations that we put in place, we're satisfied with the direction that we're getting.
Okay, great. And so those FTEs, we're directing that to the mid-year. Okay. Great. That's understood.
This is Christopher Diaz, your city attorney. Just wanted to note that hand raised in case you wanted to take additional public comment.
Right. So you're not all there. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, great. Looking for immediate impact here. So we do have a few things happening. We'll go to public comment here for item number 17. We'll go to the chamber first. Thanks for being here tonight, folks. In the Milpita City Council, a chamber, maybe the first time for some of you. If anybody's here to speak on the item, Mr. Montemora, do you see your movement? Come on up.
Thank you, Walter and Montemora Peters. I know I heard all of them, if not all. Yes, I think the controlling main one is the budget. So thank you for the organization, Public Works and the Enda, your honor, Enda, Tony, CD and everybody. That's why we have the park adoption. And I think we're watching also with the PRCRC, Parks Commission Recreation, which are Recreation Commission. So we hope, we team up, in other words, with the public, we want the parks to be the attraction of everybody. In other words, we will be known for a good and attractive parks of Milpitas. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, I'll go to the chamber. Any further public comment for item number 17? If not, I'll go to the virtual chamber. On the Zoom platform, we have Allison McDonald. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. One, I caution against outsourcing. We saw when the outsourcing of our park maintenance started several years ago, a real reduction in the quality of the maintenance that was taking place. And when we call in about issues, we find that the response is not usually very appropriate to the situation. So for example, if you complain about a problem with a tree, they're likely to cut it down rather than trim it. If you complain about a different tree that looks like it's almost dead, they trim it instead of cutting it down. And that's just a couple of examples from my local park. The other issue I wanted to bring up, I understand, I think Councilmember Karina Dominguez mentioned issues where it's hard to get to like along railroad, around, along the railroad tracks. And I wanted to let you know.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you. Thank you very much.
We wanted to invite you all to a cleanup at 8:30 on Saturday.
Thanks for being here tonight. Thank you so much. All right. Yeah, I think I do want to note that contracting out will not go to the previous sort of vendor. It's a different vendor. And in regards to the trees, we'll stick to the policies in place for tree activity. So we will take an extra look at that to ensure we are abiding by the tree policies. Interesting topic today in Milpitas, trees. Okay, great. Next up, Barbara Jo Navarro. Welcome.
Good evening. I moved to Milpitas because of the wonderful parks. But yes, it has degraded over time in the last five to seven years. And I'm hoping that we can get back to where we were before. As far as mowing the grass, I think I heard Director Tony say it's every Wednesday. I'd like for him to confirm that that is when they mow the grass at Hall Park. There are parks in Milpitas that are used for youth sports. Example, Hall Park, Murphy Park, they do soccer at both of those. Gil Park, they do softball, baseball, Cardoza. It would be interesting to know if the contract for maintenance, park maintenance, does anything special to those parks to mitigate the weeds and to maintain it a little bit nicer than just a regular grass park because youth players are trying to play soccer on it. And it's very important for safety reasons. So thank you for your efforts and I look forward to seeing our parks back into a better position than they have been in the last seven years. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Barbara Jo, a true community leader. And the folks at Hall Park and the young ladies soccer team really appreciate you working. We are working on ensuring that the playing surfaces are safe and enjoyable. So we're putting in the activity in City Hall and we want to see the young ladies win out there. Go Milpitas. Okay, great. Looking for any further comment for item number 17? Item number 17, I don't see any further comment. Shout out to our city attorney for the reminder, as there was a motion. Okay, great. So, you know, I don't think anything can be done over. Chris, did you want to?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I was going to add is just for the purposes of the public, as well as making sure our minutes are accurate. We did have a request just to make sure we restated the motion so we all heard it and making sure the minutes are accurate. But thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely. You got it. Yeah. And when it comes to FTEs and things, that'll fit right in with the mid-year. Definitely can't expect for a new FTEs to happen overnight. Not these days. Before my time, maybe. But I'm really excited to work with the MEA and to do whatever we can to just ease them, our teammates here, because you know, I don't want to see folks spread thin and it's kind of like that right now, I think, in my opinion. The procured contract is huge. I want to suggest to the city manager and the council, you know, if we need to bring back additional procured contracts with the support of the MEA for our streets and landscaping specifically, then that's something that I think our residents fully support. It's just something that we need to correct and we can't stop the efforts unless the streetscapes and streets and landscaping trees are corrected. Nothing's worse than some tall weeds with some tall litter stuck to the weeds. That's just a double. That's a double whammy right there and we got to get our residents off the streets. You know, I think when I see the Vice Mayor on Caltrans property, not city property, but on Caltrans property. And we're pushing Caltrans too. I just sent out a pretty solid email, looking for some change. But you know, I think what hurts me is when I see the Vice Mayor Carmen Montano, she's up on Jaclyn above Golf Land. Just six, eight feet away from the interstate, the right lane. And that's when I told myself, I can't have this no more. And I know it's not city property, but you know, it's just, you know, it really drives, I think, me to see a a grown woman up there with big rigs flying by. It just hurts my heart. It's just not, it's not it. But this effort will continue and I think we'll go to the Vice Mayor for the motion.
Thank you, Mayor, for those comments. Just to let the public know that I'm not afraid of hard work. I grew up on a farm when I was a kid. So, you know, labor is, is part of my, my being. It's, you know, hard labor. We grew up working hard. So when we go out cleaning up, it's, it's not a burden. It's, you know, I've always said that hard work is good for your soul, you know, labor is. And that's why I have an affinity towards MEA because they, they, they work hard. And this, I see this here as a temporary solution because we have, right now, we have weeds galore and we need to fix it right away. And I, you know, in the future, I would love to bring back all of our FTEs that we let go because of the economy. But for now, this is what we need. And so I'd like to make a motion to as I like to make a motion to accept staff's recommendation and the ones that, the presentations that you made and the streetscaping, all these landscaping and parks maintenance, all of that. Thank you.
Okay, great. I think we got everything. Checking with the city, man. Sure.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor. So I did hear what you said, but I just wanted, maybe if we can be sure we're focused on what we are asking for and that's, and we heard, and I think this has captured what you're saying is the council would like to see service levels of one for parks maintenance and for landscape maintenance. We hear that.
That's the highest level, right?
Is the highest level, which we know will require additional staffing. And that we would bring that and we bring that back in what I'm hearing, the budget cycle for mid-year, January. And I've heard that we'd also, I also did hear some discussion on support for continuing the meet and confer for the 10 parks because that contract is in place. We just have to continue. We need to go through the meet and confer with, with MEA before we, before we let that contract, which will then free up our existing staff, taking them back into the jobs we want them to do. Does that, if that clarifies what you're asking?
I like that.
Perfect. And I think we have that for the record.
Okay, we got a motion from the Vice Mayor. I'll second it. I'll second it. And we'll go to the vote if our city clerk can help us out here.
Sure. So I just want to make sure the motion included what the city manager stated.
Yes.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Aye.
Councilmember Fan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Montano?
Aye.
Mayor Tran?
And myself as an aye, the motion carries and item number 17, I guess, has been directed. Okay, great. Thank you for your work, Tony, and everybody over at Public Works. We are one. Thank you so much. And hey, we got to roll with the punches here. It's the year 2021. Certainly one, I don't think anybody can, could have anticipated. But I think we're doing a really great job as a city, despite a lot of unknowns and very happy. Thank you, staff and our city manager's office for working on this as well. Uh, let's see here. We got one, two, three, four items. I just want to look to, let's see, Councilmember Dominguez, I see your hand up, but there's an order here on my screen. And I'll let you know when you're next on the queue. I just want to save you the trouble of putting your hand up. I do have a system in front of me that says, okay. All right. Well, I think for item number 21, pardon me. Uh, you know, I'm looking at our guest and we had 100 guests total. And I have these cards. And it looks like item number 16 is a popular item tonight. I want to make a motion to postpone this item to a next meeting. Or else you'll all be here till 2:00 in the morning. And that's not what we do so much. We have very important items such as item 13, 14, and 15 that take priority. And so I want to make a motion to postpone item number 16 to a future meeting. And I need a second. Okay, we have a second from the Vice Mayor. One for the books here. We'll go to the vote to postpone item number 16 to a future meeting.
Councilmember Chua? Councilmember Dominguez?
Aye.
Councilmember Fan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Montano?
Aye.
Mayor Tran?
And myself as an aye. Item number 16 has been postponed to a future meeting. We'll go to item number 13. Let's receive a report on the Home Key Project at 1,000 Hillview Court. And we'll go to our Assistant City Manager, Ashwini Kanta.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Ashwini Kanta, Assistant City Manager. I'm joined by Police Chief Jared Hernandez and Director of Building Safety and Housing. Director Goe for item 13. Director Goe will lead the presentation for item 14. And the two items we have, yes.
Councilmember, you voted to postpone the item. There is no discussion on that. Let's go to our city attorney, Christopher Diaz, for the Roberts rules.
So Mayor, thank you for the question. As I indicated, Roberts rules should not be used as a sword, but we want to make sure it maintains order. But Brown Act also controls in all of these discussions. Is there a question that I can answer? I just didn't hear what that question was nor could the public. So I want to make sure it's repeated for the record.
Thank you very much, Mayor. My microphone, my microphone was on before the motion was made and before it even got seconded. And there was a point of clarification that I wanted to make, but the mayor restricted my voice by not calling me and not pushing the microphone like he always does. So what I wanted to say was, you can't keep postponing this item. And it's not anybody's fault that you can't control this chamber. So your meetings go way over. We had over 100 people on the queue. That is a dysfunctional chamber issue that is ran by the mayor of the city that I am not proud of today. We had 75 people who are watching us right now. And between you and Vice Mayor, you guys talked for 16 minutes of how awesome and amazing you guys are, instead of giving that time to our community on something that is so important like affordable housing. I am so sorry, but I am so disappointed in my own elected officials today. I am part of this working class and you are not representing me today. So you can continue to ignore me. You can continue to shut me off by not shutting the microphone off. But I want everyone who is viewing us at home, look at your city council. Look at who's turning their back on you. You are the working class of the city. They keep postponing this item like if they're doing something. They're not. They're not. The politics in this chamber is disgusting. There's working class people living paycheck to paycheck and you have the audacity to just cut off that conversation because you can't handle 100 people in your own chamber? This is a reflection of you, Mayor. And you too, Vice Mayor. This is your chamber. And you literally kicked out over 100 people in our community. You kicked them out. The other three items could get postponed. They don't have a deadline. They're not that important. They are definitely important to this community, but they don't have a deadline. This item does.
We'll go to the city attorneys. I'm worried about the Brown Act here, having a full-on discussion. I'm not sure if this is in line with the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor.
Privilege here.
Yeah, thank you.
It's getting a little tense, you know?
At this point, it sounds like council has postponed the item. We do have two hands raised. I think from our, obviously, if this is going to come back at a future meeting, it'd be nice to indicate a date so the public knows when they can attend again. If we don't know that date, any hands raised, you may want to consider taking public comments. So those people have an opportunity to be heard tonight.
Okay, we'll hear them. Let's go to the chamber first. If anybody's here for item number seven, or pardon me, item number 16, which has been postponed. We'll give you an opportunity here. Okay, okay, come on up.
Yeah, Peter Zach here with Lion Living. Very disappointed to see the item postponed. We had 100 people here that were here in support of the item tonight. We've worked so hard on this item since April. And, you know, we're happy to be part of the solution of affordable housing in the city. As long-term community partner since 2008, we respected and took the heart, the comments from the city council last September 21st. Council wanted more community outreach, we delivered. Council wanted to ensure rent restrictions, we delivered. Council wanted to reduce the go-forward risk for the city, we delivered. Council wanted the best deal for the city that's been achieved statewide, we delivered. And you know what? Today I was so happy because staff from the city of Long Beach called your city manager today to confirm that the deal that's on the table for the city of Milpitas is the best deal statewide. And I encourage you to talk to your city manager about that.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you. Yes. Long history here in Milpitas. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you. Yes. Long history here in Milpitas. Thank you. I'm not sure if we have, you know, this item has been postponed. Uh, you know, I want to hear the homeless uh housing uh item. I want to put the homeless ahead of the affordable. I know there's concerns about the housing, but I like to hear about the homeless uh unhoused as agenda is. Prior to affordable, and I'm not even sure if this is affordable housing tonight. I'm not even sure. I think it's moderate income housing, so. Um, you know, for anybody asking, I want to hear the homeless unhoused first before the moderate. This isn't, I don't think this is affordable housing tonight. But the facts will speak for themselves. The facts will speak for themselves. So our members on the Zoom, uh thank you for being here with us, but um this item has been postponed. But uh we'll still hear you out. Um but there is no discussion or action by the council. We thank you for being here tonight. Thank you so much. Okay, let's go with Jake, uh Bill Chinskey on the Zoom. Welcome.
Hi, hello, and everyone here?
Welcome, welcome.
Yes, so I just, I wanted to express my disappointment with the uh postponing of the item sixteen. I mean, I've been waiting for, I think, upwards of two hours to get to this item. I mean, I was expecting it to happen way earlier, so I was waiting. And actually, my friends are also waiting for it. And it just saddens me that so many people are waiting for it, and uh the decision has been made to postpone it. I don't understand why. Especially since obviously this speaks the interest of a lot of people. I mean, uh personally, like if you want to know why I'm here is because I work all day. I work all day, nine to five, sometimes way later. Like sometimes I work up up until eight, okay? And I'm a very, very, very busy person, but I cannot afford a lot of you know, luxuries that people who work similar.
Thank you very much. We'll go next to Allison McDonald. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Um, yes, I think that uh separating this and saying that uh you want to hear about the unhoused that is more important is kind of ironic to me because it is a housing crisis that is causing our unhoused population to grow. This is for low and moderate income folks. Uh without creating more of that kind of housing, the pressure on um other kinds of housing becomes greater and greater. And people who are at the lowest income level, the most vulnerable, end up being displaced by those who can afford something, but um there isn't enough to go around in our community. So I encourage you to uh look seriously at this opportunity to create more low-income and moderate-income housing in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thanks for being here. This item has been postponed. Uh item number sixteen has been postponed. So that we can hear other items tonight. No action will be taken on item number sixteen. We welcome you back anytime. Come on down to Milpitas. Next up, we have Haim Vizov.
Uh, yes, hello, can anybody hear me?
Yes, yes.
Hi, I just would like to um say how much disappointed I am from postponing item number sixteen. I actually had to take some time off work for that. Um that's how much it's important for me and my wife. We work very hard. Um, and we were looking forward very much to get something done, but it looks like that is keep, keep getting postponed again and again. And I don't feel that this is serving our community very well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Alfred Williams. Okay, well, we're gonna get public comment.
Yeah, yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
No, I think. We're gonna do public comment here. Okay, Alfred, please.
Yeah, um so I just wanted to say, um, I'm a little, little disappointed myself, um, you know, and, you know, while I appreciate the candor and, you know, your services to this country. I've been serving this country for twenty-one, still serving it. And if it's a distraction to people like me, uh that being the the cost of living in this area, I'm pretty sure it's a distraction to others. So it's definitely issued a worth taking a look at. Understand that, you know, you have to look at things like the unhoused, but I mean, we spent a pretty considerable amount of time looking at um, you know, how to pick up trash, right? So I think it's definitely something worth looking at. Um, so I would not suggest postponing it too much further. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Yeah, appreciate you. Certainly an item we do want to hear, but just looking at, I'll break it down for you folks. I'm gonna break it down for you folks. Uh, you got a hundred people. And each person's gonna speak. This is math here. I'm just doing the math. It's not about um this or that or anything subjective. Uh, you know, one of the reasons I brought down the speaking time to one minute from three minutes, if you imagine a hundred people times three minutes, that's three hundred minutes. That's a few hours. And so even breaking it down to one minute. There's a hundred people. It's. That's easy math to do, so um close to two hours. And so uh because we have other important items that we have postponed, like item number thirteen, which has been postponed, which is important to us, uh then that is the reason why item number sixteen has been postponed. Um, there's a history to it. And if we took item number sixteen, we'd be here till two or three in the morning. And so if folks want to talk about, they got work and things, um trying to do you a favor, get you home early and safe tonight so you can get some rest and actually go to work tomorrow. So um I would love to hear the item, but uh I've made the motion to postpone it um in the interest of this meeting and other dynamics as well. So uh let's continue with the public comment. We'll take our public comment. But again, folks, thank you for being here. There's no action tonight. Uh for item number sixteen, uh it has been postponed. And so let's go next to Wendy on the Zoom. Hey, Wendy on Zoom. How you doing? Welcome. All right, maybe we'll get someone from the chamber to come on up here. That way we can uh maximize our time. Come on up, sir. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor of the Council, uh my name is Bob Lefk, I am a resident of Milpitas and a consultant, and I do work for Lion Living. Um, so we've worked really hard to get here tonight and to be to this position so that we could present to you, I think, some pretty good news about the improvements in this program that we've made in the last thirty days since we were here last. So obviously. It's disappointing that we can't be heard tonight, because we have a lot of good stuff to tell you about. The folks who are at home, those hundred people, uh they made sacrifices to be ready to speak to you and to tell you what was on their mind and what they believed. And now um they kind of have to rearrange their life again. So I obviously, it's disappointing that we can't speak to you tonight. Um, I think we could have gotten through this. I don't understand why seventeen had to be moved up. That doesn't make any sense to me at all, but those are your decisions to make and.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, yeah, come on up, sir. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, just wanted to say, um, you know, yes, I am a little disappointed that we couldn't um be heard tonight. You gave us uh some tasks last time, and that was to uh go out, meet with the community. We did that. We took your direction seriously. We had a couple of community meetings. We had over seventy in attendance at one of the meetings. On a Zoom meeting with the chamber, we had about uh, I want to say thirty-plus people. And it was great to hear and reassuring just how excited people were about this program. And they, you know, voiced some, had, you know, people had some concerns. And what we did was we went to work over the last month to try to make, you know, um the project a better project. And we want, we would have liked to have uh brought that for you today because we're really proud of the work we did. And I mean, you can tell by the number of people and the organizations that we have in support of it. Um, you know, I think, believe we had over a hundred people that wanted to speak about the need, and that was another thing that was just exciting to hear, was just uh people actually saw this as a program they could take advantage of and were really excited about. So I want to thank you for giving us that direction. I also want to thank.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you. And here's the thing, you know, we've done this before where there's a triple-digit number of people or dozens and dozens of people. Uh, you know, what's gonna happen is we're gonna get to this item. It'll be one thirty in the morning. And folks will be tired like it, you know, it's happened before. They'll, you know, folks will have to tap out at one thirty in the morning, and we won't get to a decision. And then now tomorrow, when you go to work, uh you're gonna be exhausted. And so um I already know the story that's gonna happen if we listen to this. So I'm glad we postponed it a hundred percent. Uh, we need to, now that we can anticipate the number of folks that are here for public comment, we'll be able to manage it better. Uh, I don't think anybody here anticipated uh quite so many people, and there are a lot of people. And so I'm trying to save you time. I've been through this dance before, folks, former mayors, former council members. Y'all know that's what happens. It'll get to one thirty in the morning, and then everyone gets too tired, time to go home. And I'm not doing that, and I don't think anybody else should either. I will plan for something, of course, and so please.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm Sean Rossen with Waterford Property Company. Um, really excited to be here tonight. We were hoping to have our agenda item heard.
Yeah, me too.
We're doing really exciting stuff throughout the state of California. We were able to lower market rate housing and turn it into moderate income housing and really help the working families of our state of California. Here in Milpitas, we've been engaged with city staff since April. Um, we've read the staff report for tonight's agenda item that we were hoping to hear. We provided written responses that we think that we've comprehensively addressed all of the open items. As Pete Zach mentioned from Lion Communities, there was three takeaways from last council meeting, which was to engage the public, which we've done that, deeper affordability and increased capital needs assessments uh for the project. It's not often that you get to provide such a public good. What we're doing is we are buying market-rate multifamily buildings and lowering rents. We had a community meeting two weeks ago where we had almost a hundred residents from the project show up in support of lowering rents. And so.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate you. Thank you very much for being here tonight. And uh it's a postponement. I mean, what more can I say? Uh, you're, you're more than welcome to speak. This item has been postponed. There's no action.
I respect that, Mayor. Good evening. Uh, this is really uh a very good initiative. I'm disappointed that we are not able to take it up today, but I really request you to uh to take this into your concern and schedule another meeting as soon as possible. And I'm really thankful that you gave us the opportunity uh to provide our feedback, at at least though you are not able to take this subject today. Thank you very much. And I'm looking forward for our, for the next meeting and then, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. I'm gonna get you home at an earlier time than two in the morning with no action, trust me. Come on up if you'd like to speak. Uh, you know, we're gonna bring this item back. You can speak again either on Zoom, which is very convenient, by the way, or you can come back to City Hall. Welcome.
Hello, Mayor. My name is Salman.
Bring the microphone down, my friend.
Sorry.
Bring it down a little bit. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, my name is Salman Saraj. I'm a resident of Turing. And uh this is a very good program that we were all excited and came here to took off early from work and spare some time. And now it's just a little bit of disappointment. Uh, I know you, you have so many items to take care, but uh this will help four hundred-plus residents to, on their rent reduction with this program. So I would highly suggest that you can um take some time to move this forward on time. If you're going to reschedule it and then uh come up with a reasonable uh, you know, resolution.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And you'll be going home early tonight. Thank me later.
Sure, thank you.
Well, we will be uh discussing this item. Don't worry, folks. It's just not happening at two AM tonight. And uh, welcome, welcome.
Hello, my name is Carolyn. I was also here for the program. Um, it is disappointing. I'm also disappointed, like many other people who came tonight. And I know that the reason why it was postponed is because there are so many people, and I do recognize that. But uh, you know, we gotta plan better in the future. Um, if you see that there are, there are a hundred people here for one reason and one reason only, don't push a matter that so many people came here for, forward. So seventeen, I get that it's important to you and it's important to the community. But there are people from the community who showed up here for this specific reason. So you have to pay attention to that. Um, I am very disappointed, and I get that you're trying to save time and you're trying to get people home early, but also recognize that took time for people to be here. So don't be dismissive about that fact. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Now I hear you. Uh, okay, great. Let's go. Uh, anybody else? Come on up. Have a great evening.
Mayor, council members, um I want to just touch on something. I know Cheryl Jordan sent in a letter to you guys today that everyone had an opportunity to read. I just wanted just read an excerpt from that, because I think it's extremely important. Um, she said in her letter that we're finding that approximately fifty percent of the responders to their survey have indicated that it would be, that they prefer to live closer to Milpitas, but are not able to do so because of housing costs. Another data point that she shared in her letter is that the point of concern is that sixty percent um is that sixty percent know that it's incredibly difficult to find housing in Milpitas and these employees who are considered leaving um because of that. So just want to make sure that we're focusing on the teachers here. This is an incredibly important program for the missing middle, first responders, all those people that we've discussed before. Just want to make sure that we can make time uh at a very soon council meeting to focus on the teachers, to allow us to have discussions about providing housing for those.
Thank you very much, County. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Yeah, it's all the teachers here. Uh, if you could wave, uh all the teachers. Okay. All right, all right, members of the public. Okay, great. Um, again, uh if you've spoken already, everybody gets one opportunity. That's, that's how it goes. Sixty-seven years, it's been how it's been. Um, but again, we postponed this item. There's no action whatsoever that will happen. And um I'm actually glad it's postponed, so everybody can get home uh at a decent time. We will prepare for the number of people in person and on Zoom next time uh so that um we can manage the time. I know our former elected officials can testify. Um, it's just mathematically, uh we'd be here uh to the early morning. And so um, I've been here before in the past, where we've gone till one thirty, no action. People are tired. They can't think. Everybody's tapping out. And then we go home, we have to come back again. So I'm gonna save you all that. And we're gonna bring it and we're gonna get it done uh in one meeting rather than two. Yeah, we'll talk about it. We'll talk about it. But again, I've been through this dance before, folks. I've been here a number of years. I'm just being um heart-to-heart with you. Uh, we will go till two in the morning, two thirty, and then no decisions made because everybody can't think. We're gonna go home. And then tomorrow's gonna be rough. And so I'm gonna save you the time. I've been here before. If you haven't spoken, come on up.
Hi, my name is Leo. Thank you for being here. Uh, I know I'm the one that came here, but I just wanted to mention you are saying that it's to save time. Um, what would you recommend? It's gonna save us time rather than having a forum like this.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for asking. I'm gonna repeat what I said. I've been through this dance before. We're gonna go until two in the morning, and then people are gonna get really tired. And then, uh, you know, people are gonna be looking for coffee. And then there's gonna be no decision that's made, and then you all will be disappointed at two in the morning, walking out of here, no decision made. And then you're gonna have to come back to another meeting. So I'm gonna consolidate the inconvenience for you, so you could be in bed by eleven or twelve and have a sort of a healthy day tomorrow. And so that's, that's the, that's the perspective of my experience. And there's nothing more than I care about people coming out to City Hall. I love when people come to City Hall. I love it. I miss this. It's been a long time. I love uh public comment. And so what I'm saying is, if we take this item on tonight, just look at the number of people. That's just math. You know, some people lie, some people lie. Numbers don't lie. And so I'm saying there's, you know, it's gonna go till two in the morning. I'm not trying to be a part of that dance. And I don't think it's best for your health and your safety either, driving out of here at two in the morning all tired, knowing that there was no vote, no decision, no approval, and you gotta come back? You're about to walk out of here in about fifteen minutes. And just think about it. And I'm here to put you ahead on the game because I've been doing this game for a while. And so I'm trying to push you forward on this game, and I want to save you time. So that's my best recommendation. We'll bring it back to another meeting and we'll capture it in its entirety. You're welcome to my world.
No, no, I completely understand, and thank you for your concern.
I got your back, man. Yeah.
No, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
I want to know if there is something that you would prefer in a sense of support? Would you rather us get, you know, letters of support and just have those stacked up for you in order to see how many people are really behind this rental discount program?
Yeah, letters work. Letters happen all the time.
Would that be a preference to save time?
What's that?
Would that be a preference to save time?
Well, I think whatever your preference is, and you know, you have a community organizer over here probably that's helping you, telling you where to go, what. that's helping you, telling you where to go, what to say. So, you know, work with them. I mean, it's your freedom, so I can't tell you what to do. It's kind of biased. But I love having folks here.
I'm only saying that for the sake of, for the sake of time.
Yeah.
If you prefer.
Emails is an option, letters.
Okay.
I'll, I email everybody back. So you're gonna get a reply from me. So yeah, it, it's really, you have options.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you got it. And I'm telling you, you're gonna sleep, you're gonna sleep better at night, everybody. Thank you, thank you. I appreciate it. Respect. Yeah, one. Okay, let's see. All right, let's go to public comment. This item has been postponed. Still saving time. Mr. Montemeyer, come on up. Yeah. I don't think we've heard from you, huh?
Yeah, Voltaire Montemeyer. I always wanted to say something. I'm in the middle. I think the council is defensive, but defending enough. Understand the side of the public, people at home. And sorry that I'm in the middle. I understand both sides, all sides. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a huge influx of folks coming in. Numbers are through the charts. I haven't seen something like this since pre-COVID. Let's go to the Zoom. Let's go to Wen Ling Chen. This item has been postponed. No action can be taken. Thanks for being with us here tonight, folks. We will have another meeting about this. Wen Ling.
Yes, speaking. Can you hear me?
Welcome, welcome, yes.
Yes, I'm a resident in the Turing apartment in Milpitas with my son. I just want to show my support and in favor of the rent reduction program.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Next up, we have Wendy. Second try here. Hopefully it works. Hey, welcome, Wendy. Okay, wait for the microphone. And if you've done speaking, please lower your virtual raised hand. That way we can ensure everybody else gets an opportunity. This item has been postponed. It's done for the night, folks. We're just listening to public comment. For folks that did show up, we'll give them that. But this item has been postponed, like others have in the past. Next item up is item number thirteen, after the public comment. For item number sixteen. Okay. Give Wendy another try here.
Hello?
Yes, yes, welcome.
Hi, I just want to say I'm very disappointed that this is being postponed again.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, we have Ashley Malone. And we'll help unmute the microphone. That's it with item number sixteen, folks. It's been postponed. And item number thirteen will be heard next. Just the reason due to the math. It's just the math. There's so many people. And that will keep us here with no guaranteed, no guaranteed decision till the wee hours of the morning. And so we're gonna, now that we know what to expect, I don't think we had any inclination of how many people that we're gonna be here. So it's just the math. Just math. Move forward. Okay, Ashley Malone, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear?
Yes, welcome, welcome.
Thank you. So, good evening, council members. I just wanted to express my discontent, like many others, what an embarrassment to your community to have the nerve to express your disinterest in hearing our hundred minutes of support of the Turing workforce housing conversion, after making us wait three plus hours just to hear of the postponement and the lame comments made over and over again about how you don't want to hear your community speak until two AM. Will definitely encourage us to support this topic even more as it's evident that the city council members have their own agenda and it clearly doesn't benefit the community.
Thank you. We'll hear the item another day. Next up, we have Kevin Martin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, welcome.
Hey, well, thank you for the time. I, I'm calling again, first to express my disappointment that you're not hearing the item this evening on the, on the rental program. And also, secondly, you know, similar to Ashley and others, I, I don't understand how there's not enough time to hear the, the hundred or so people on Zoom and we have plenty of time to repeat, we're not hearing this item this evening. And I'm just doing the math and I'm just preserving your evening for you. I mean, I think if you would take away that unnecessary comment and let people say what they came here to say, we may have plenty of time to hear the comment and actually have some intelligent deliberation about it. But ultimately, it's your, it's your, it's your room, Mayor, and we'll follow your direction and we'll be, we'll be ready for your postponement. Thank you.
And thank you for the respect. I appreciate that. You know, we do have item thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and then sixteen. But I appreciate that. You know, I, I can only say that I'm doing this in the best interest for you. I've, I've been through this dance before, two in the morning. People are tapping out, passing out, and there's no decision. So I'm, I'm really saving you all the time, because we're gonna bring this back in its entirety and its completeness. So next up, we have Amaka Anyanwu. Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, welcome.
Hello, everyone. So this is Amaka. I'm calling from Turing. I'm not gonna bug you with, you know, saying how disappointed I am. However, given how popular item sixteen is, do you have an idea of when you're going to be rescheduling it? And perhaps maybe you could have it as a single item on that day or make it the first item?
I like that idea. I like that idea. We'll note that. I like that idea very much. That, that would be referred to as a special meeting, perhaps.
Yeah.
Community desires. I'm very open. Next up, Roger Stalback.
Hi, can you hear me?
Welcome, welcome.
Hey, thank you. I think to Kevin's point earlier, I believe he spoke. The postponement really hasn't saved much time with a hundred people coming on here. And then two, it's actually my son's birthday this Sunday and he was looking for a clown and I think I just found one. Thank you.
Oh, that's a new one. Next up, Nian Tai.
Hi, I'm from Turing apartment. I just wanna, I'm, I'm here for like a couple hours already and I just wanna show my support for the, the program moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Josh Childress.
Thank you. I just wanted, once again, show my support for, for the Turing project. You know, when you, when you look at this opportunity and the price of housing in the Bay Area, you know, saving an average of four dollars a month is, is meaningful for families. And so I don't want it, I don't want that to take, be taken lightly. I think that that's important. That's a car note. That's a month's worth of groceries. That's meaningful dollars. And so, you know, I, I don't want to say I'm disappointed in it not being heard, but I just want everyone to understand, you know, that this is really important for the community and for, you know, those essential workers and workforce people that, you know, need the savings. So just, please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Ananda Kamwendo.
Yes, hello.
Welcome, welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me. I am also another Turing resident. And I am very disappointed that we've been here for three plus hours. But like everybody else is saying, I hope that you guys don't take this lightly and we're able to see this soon, because we, we were looking forward for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Arnold Valencia.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, welcome.
Hey, this message is for you, Rich. I think it's for you to say that we are being told on what to say here. It's a little unfair, because we are attending this, this meeting, because we are deeply involved in this. And this is what our heart is saying, that the housing in the Bay area is too expensive and we need a resolution for this. For you to say that we are getting, we are being taught by these.
I know, I didn't say that, no.
Well, you said that, you, you said that you're, we are being taught by these people on what to say.
I was gonna refer to the community organizer, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
We are here because we represent the community. We are here because this is what our heart wants. And that's because, not because we are being told on what to do. That's it.
All right, I agree with you. Next up, we have Ford Christopher. Hopefully in the right order there.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, welcome.
Good evening, Council. Again, I'm gonna echo the same sentiment you've heard tonight and we're probably gonna be here till one or two in the morning, despite the decision you've made, Mayor. Again, beyond disappointed to see it's been postponed. Your job is to take these issues in terms of the community's priority, not your priority. You haven't seen a community voice like this since pre-COVID, is what you said. What does that say? I'll tell you what it says. It says that this is an incredibly important topic. It's the biggest issue you've seen in coming on two years now. There's many people depending on you. They've been depending on you since April to vote on this issue. We have a housing issue and it's up to you five to help solve it. We elected you to do that. Please, please, please make this a priority. Thank you, Council.
And thank you, it is a priority. Next up, Mitchell Sweet.
Yeah, hi. Hope you can hear me. Listen, I don't want, I'm one of the hundred. I don't want to waste your time. I understand you made a decision. I respect that. All I want to say, something I believe in, you know, sometimes it, it, you know, is worth getting tired or staying up late to make real change. Yeah, that's all I want to say. Thanks.
Thank you for being with us tonight. Harsha Joshi.
Hey, another Turing apartment resident here. And for past one hour, we, we've been just hearing people saying that how disappointed they are rather than just discussing items, just item sixteen. We could have at least like discussed some issues or some start like discussion on item sixteen rather than just like wasting hundred people's time saying how disappointed they are.
I agree with you. I'm, I'm disappointed too. All right, folks, item number sixteen has been postponed. We will not be taking any action or having any further discussion. A public comment is very close to conclusion. And if you haven't spoken yet, I'll give you the chance. Welcome.
Just a, just a quick comment. There is no no on this program. It's all yes. And it is very easy for you guys to say yes. That's all.
I like that. I like that. That was the best one all night. That was the best one all night, yeah. All right, we don't, right. That's the best one all night. That is, I agree with you. That was the best one all night. Like I said, I love Milpitas, man. I love everybody for real. I'm at the Turing as well. I got friends that live there, it's family. I'm at Trader Joe's. I get it. I'm trying, I did this out of my heart. Like, I'm trying to save y'all time, so that y'all can not be here till two in the morning and then have no action. Imagine how upset you'd be at two in the morning and it got postponed, because that's what will happen. Same action, postponed, same category. At two in the morning, then it got postponed. I don't want to see you at two in the morning. I'm gonna have another meeting and we'll be organized, because we know who's coming and we can get it done in one day and maybe get it done at an early time. Because I'd rather see y'all like this right now than at two in the morning. I know that. I know that. So thank you, everybody, for being here. Item number sixteen has been postponed. I'm looking for the public comment. I see a virtual raised hand. That person has spoken already. Everybody gets an equal opportunity. And so we're gonna bring it back around. Stay tuned. It's coming, we're not waiting like another two months or anything. It's literally coming back as soon as possible. There you go, ASAP. And you about to be home by eleven. I live unable, so I get you. I'm at Crowdaddy, having a great time. So y'all have a great night. Thank you for your comment. Shoot me an email and we're gonna get to this like next week. Okay? I appreciate y'all. Rather see y'all at ten thirty like this than at two thirty like that. Okay? That's where I'm coming from. Thank you. Well, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta get approval by this guy and this lady, so. Yeah, but I can't do it right now. But Kyle, you know what I'm talking about, man. Sean, same thing. You know, I can't have everybody here till two thirty in the morning. I just can't. And then another postponement? Well, you know, I'll, I'll call for a special meeting. We'll fit it in. Call, point of order, point of order, point of order. I got your back. Thank you. We're gonna move on to the next item. There's no further public comment. Let me check in with the council here. Let me, I, I'm gonna check in here. I gotta control this in chronological order. So council member fan.
You know, I, I just wanted to say to all of you who, who came here to speak tonight and all of you who were planning on, on speaking tonight but didn't get a chance to, I sincerely apologize. I understand if you feel disrespected and I apologize for that as well. This is something that I have been trying to move forward since May and we've made tremendous progress. If it were up to me, I'd stay here till two. I'd stay here till, as, as long as it needs to. At the end of the day, we have a constitutional responsibility to represent and listen to the community voice on this. But I understand that action has already been taken to postpone the item. That I can't reverse. However, I do ask that you continue to advocate for what you are passionate about. And don't let this deter you, because council meetings happen throughout the entire year. Special meetings occur. And I encourage you to stay engaged, especially on this topic. I know that it can be disheartening and some of you might wanna, you know, hang up the gloves and never attend a council meeting again. I hope that's not the case and that you'll reconsider. Because at the end of the day, I do think that, you know, that for, for good policy to be passed, you know, it can take as long as it needs to. I think that throughout the course of history, we have seen that. But we, we have to be willing to make the changes. So thank you for staying here and continuing to hear our thoughts even past the decision that was already made.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Fan. Yes, action has been taken.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Fan. Yes, action has been taken. Next up, Councilmember Dominguez, and then we'll move on to item number thirteen.
Thank you very much, Mayor. First and foremost, thank you to all who stayed and spoke. The reason is today is bullying month. That's why we wear orange. Raise your voice. Don't ever allow anybody to shut you out of your home. This is your home. So, thank you for coming back. Because this is your home. It's not our home. We have an obligation. You elected us. And I know that there's two working members on this council. I know that I have to report to work tomorrow, and you best believe I work overtime, so I could take days off and represent the working class that's here today. I am deeply, deeply, I, I'm so sorry. I am so sorry if this was your first council meeting. I apologize, but please stay in the fight. This is not a scripted show. This isn't a show. This is real lives. And maybe you just don't know it because you don't work. If you had a traditional job, maybe you would feel differently. So today, I am asking for a special meeting to be called next Monday. Keep your word, Mayor. You want a special meeting? Let's do it on Monday. That gives enough time for members to rally, to come back. Let's do it earlier. You said earlier that you would give it a full day. Keep your word. I make the motion to call a special meeting for this item to be continued as the only item next week on this council. Can I please get a second?
I'll have to convene with, uh, the Vice Mayor and the City Manager. Uh, I had already mentioned that I am open to a special meeting, so, uh, have no fear. It's, it's on the way, yeah.
So call it today if it's on the way. Why, why do we have to wait? Make the motion right now, Mayor. This is your chamber. You direct it. You don't have to convene with the Vice Mayor. You're the mayor of the city. Own your chamber right now. Make that motion.
I love your passion.
It's not passion. You need to stop. It's not passion. It's responsibility. You call, you call all these other decisions. There's working class members here. Do you know what it means to take a day off? Do you know what it means? Not to be able to pay your rent?
Can I ask, can I ask you your question?
Actually, no. You're, I would like you to make the motion for a special meeting for Monday.
It doesn't, uh, no, you know, it doesn't really work like that. I have to see which staff is available.
Ask staff right now. Steve, are we available on Monday?
We have like twelve department heads, and we have support staff. And so I can't just say it's gonna happen, because if we don't have perfect attendance for the item from the Planning Department,
You are the mayor. You made an ice cream cap in thirty days.
Let me finish what I gotta say. Look, it takes so many people to have a meeting, and so we have to ensure that their attendance is there. We can't just tell everybody.
Before with other items. You have called a special meeting before. Call the special meeting down.
Point of order, one, point of order, one at a time, please.
Call the special meeting.
Point of order.
Stop hiding behind the gavel. Call the special meeting. Call it.
I, I think you should lower your voice, uh.
I will lower my voice when these people have a fair chance in their home. Stop hiding behind that gavel.
Um, okay, I'll wait for you to, I'll wait for you. Let me know when you're done.
I'm finished. Could you call a special meeting, please, for Monday?
I'm about to get cut off. Watch, watch me talk. I'm gonna get cut off. So, I need to call people so that they can attend, because we need the building director and the planning director. Uh, people may have, uh, paid time off. Some people have medical issues, and so I'm not gonna sit here and call this meeting like I've never called it before. There's a process, because if I call this meeting and half the people from the city aren't there, then the meeting is canceled. So I'm gonna do it the right way. And so I have no further comment. Thank you very much. Okay, that's it, uh, for the request. I want to move on to item number thirteen, and let's receive a report on the Home Key Project at one thousand Hillview Court, and we have our Assistant City Manager Ashwini Kanta.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. So, uh, we can bring up the presentation, please. Um, so we're doing a combined presentation for items thirteen and fourteen, because there is some commonality. The first part of the presentation will provide an update on the Home Key Project at one thousand Hillview Court, and the second part will provide a six-month update on services for the unhoused. We have, uh, Consuelo Hernandez, Director of the Office of Supportive Housing from the county, available for questions for both presentations, and Tang Tran from Jamboree, uh, Housing for item thirteen. Um, next slide, please.
We're gonna be out of here.
Mayor, okay to continue?
Please, just doing some time management. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so, uh, on the, on the item thirteen, we're just gonna cover some background of what we have in place for communications, and then updates on project management and security, as well as an update on construction and occupancy status of the project. Next slide, please. So in August, at the request of Councilmember Dominguez, uh, Council, uh, directed staff to bring a status report on this Home Key Project. Um, and so today's, uh, the staff report and today's presentation responds to that request. Uh, so, uh, just very quickly, on project Home Key, in 2020, the state launched this as part of its response to protecting individuals experiencing homelessness. There was a total of eight hundred million in grant funding that was made available for local entities to purchase and rehabilitate, uh, housing. Of the eight hundred million, seven fifty million was for acquisition and fifty million for operating costs. The former had to be expended by December thirtieth, twenty twenty, and the latter by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And so the county took the lead to identify potential projects for permanent supportive housing, and, uh, considered various possibilities, chose Extended Stay America Hotel, which was located at Thousand Hillview Court in Mill Peters, as a priority candidate. Uh, they partnered with Jamboree Housing on the project and were successful in securing, uh, grant funding. The county also committed some, uh, funding towards this project from Measure A Fund, so, uh, o- over twenty-nine million, and had a bridge loan into, uh, the amount of twenty-five million. And so the project basically includes conversion of an existing, uh, one hundred and forty-six room hotel into a hundred and thirty-two unit permanent supportive housing facility, uh, with some managers' units and onsite supportive services. And, uh, several of the ground floor rooms were actually converted to community spaces, um, and case management and other supportive services are offered on site, um, and the multipurpose rooms are available for residents and for social events, and there's some amenities outside as well. Uh, next slide, please. So the project has many interested stakeholders, including the county, the city, the property management company, and of course, the Mill Peters community at large. As council is well aware, there was a lot of community interest in the project, and so several regular meetings have been scheduled to ensure there's ongoing and timely communication, as well as any needed follow-up between the various entities involved in this project. So there are weekly property and services meetings with staff from Jamboree, the county, uh, property manager Hyder Company, as well as a board services, which is a nonprofit providing the supportive services. In addition, there are monthly meetings related to outreach to the homeless, as well as other coordination, and so we have several city representatives, uh, including executive staff from Building Safety and Housing, the Police Department, as well as Recreation and Community Services that participate in these monthly meetings, along with representatives from the county and a board services. And then more recently, in order to address some concerns about safety and security at the property, as well as to better understand how the project will serve unhoused Mill Peters residents, uh, we have executive staff from the city and county. We've initiated quarterly check-in meetings. So the representatives from the city include a police captain and myself. County representatives include, uh, a deputy county executive, which is the Director of the Office of Supportive Housing. And then we also have other staff from the county, Jamboree, and Hyden. So we had our first quarterly meeting on September eighth, with the next one already scheduled. Next slide, please. So this slide provides some information on property management and site securities. The county's Office of Supportive Housing screens individuals for placement in the supportive housing project, and Jamboree requires individuals placed here to sign a twelve-month lease and abide by the terms of the lease, and the lease terms are really intended to ensure a safe community for all the residents there. So in July twenty twenty-one, Jamboree hired a new property management company called Hyder. Hyder is responsible for rent collection, as well as property maintenance and security. And so they have made, uh, several changes related to security, so initiated enhanced security measures, installed twenty-two exterior security cameras, as well as key fob entries at all the entryways. And as part of phase two, an additional twenty-two security cameras will be installed on the interior. And, uh, the new security company that was brought on board in July as well, this has led to changes in security of the project, including the hiring of security guards to provide twenty-four-seven security inside, as well as patrol services for evening and weekend hours. And so I'll turn it over now to Police Chief Hernandez to discuss, uh, to discuss some statistics related to calls for service, as well as incidents of the property. Uh, next slide, please.
Thank you. Good evening, uh, council, and happy birthday, City Manager. I'll be covering very efficiently the crime statistics or, um, our service delivery here at the site at one thousand Hillview Court. What you're looking at is a chart that denotes the number of calls for service, as well as the number of reports taken, uh, at the site, broken up by month. As you can see from the chart, um, everything above the gray bar indicates our activity prior to the Hyder, Hy- Hyder Company, assuming property management, and everything below the gray bar is after they resume their role as the property manager. You'll see a, a, a significant difference between total number of calls versus the total number of reports. The reason that you see that is because we thought it was important for council to see all the times that an officer had responded as a result of a call for service to the property. And in the call for service category, you see things like nine-one-one hangups, uh, noise disturbances. It's really a totality of everything that we've done there. The more significant column, which is the number of reports, indicates, uh, a situation where we had to document the reason that we were there, and those are denoted in the district, uh, description category. Using May as the example, there were three police reports taken at the property. One was for a court order violation, one was for trespassing, and the other was a sex registrant that needed to register as an offender. The other thing that's probably important to note, uh, or consider rather, when you're looking at these numbers, uh, they, you see a, a significant fluctuation, uh, using September as the example. One of the things that I don't have access to is, is what the residency or the occupancy is at the property. So it doesn't mean necessarily per capita, or it doesn't mean necessarily that we had more activity. It could be per capita or relative to the number of residents living there. And that concludes this slide. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I have a ponder a question to you. Uh, this is certainly an item that's very important to tens of thousands of people. I could think of a few hundred homes on Hillview. Um, Hyder Company assumes property management. I know that was a pivotal point for the public safety of that residence, uh, parcel. Um, were they able to install the security cameras? I know that was a, sort of an ask. I know it's not our, we're not property managers, but would you happen to know if they put the, uh, security, uh, cameras in there? And is anybody from the county here? Maybe they're next, huh?
Ye- yes, Mayor. There is members from the county, and if we can go back one slide, please. So Assistant City Manager Kontuck, um, did cover some of this. So there's currently twenty-two exterior cameras installed, and I'm not sure what phase two date is, but the plan is to install twenty-two additional interior cameras, and I'm not sure of the status. The county will have to answer that.
Right on. Well, we'll have that updated. Sorry, we do have, uh, staff from the county, Mayor, if you, if you want.
I'm so happy to hear this item tonight. I know our residents are watching closely. Okay, great. Carry on, carry on.
Okay, uh, if we could go forward to slides, and Sharon will cover this.
Thank you. Um, so the Home Key Grant had a very accelerated and stringent timeline. In order to meet this timeline, the project renovation work had to be implemented in phases. Phase one consisted of unit accessibility upgrades and unit conversions. And to meet the requirements set by this date, phase one was completed by February this year. Uh, phase two is for common space renovation, as well as exterior, and this phase is expected to be completed by the end of this year. Next slide, please. The population for the state Home Key Grant requirement are individuals experiencing homelessness. At the Hillview Project, have been working very closely with the county coordinated assessment system to enroll clients into supportive housing programs and place them in supportive housing. Individuals referred for placement in supportive, uh, permanent supportive housing are offered a choice of location, if that's available. And county staff has noted that sometimes unhoused individuals from one community prefer to move to another community. As of September eighth, uh, the project at Hill, Hillview Court has fifty clients in residence, with sixteen more clients ready to move in. And the county team is working with sixty-six additional clients to fully occupy the hundred thirty-two units. County staff has also shared that referrals for permanent supportive housing have been taken about three to six months, and that they're working on improvements to accelerate this timeline. And now we'll look at the larger county system and unhoused services. And so this is item fourteen, and here's a brief outline of the presentation for this item. First, we'll look at the background for unhoused services, and then, uh, review the county's supportive housing services and system. And then we'll take a look at the data from affiliated clients. And next is the homeless engagement and access team, or the HE team progress. And then last, we'll conclude with recommendations for both items thirteen and fourteen. Next slide, please. Uh, so here's background for unhoused services. The city has an agreement with the county Office of Supportive Housing for homeless outreach, assessment, and street-based case management services. City has also implemented a dignity on wheels mobile shower and laundry program with a nonprofit service provider, WeHope. And staff has been providing monthly progress reports, and tonight, we're presenting a media report that evaluates the impact of the unhoused services in Mill Peters from March through August. In September, we brought a comprehensive report on mobile shower and laundry to council, so tonight, we're gonna focus on the county's services. All of these efforts and progress have been made by city departments collaborating with each other, as well as working closely with service providers through the referral process that our team has developed. To leverage all of these services, the HE team has also supported the dignity on wheels team, um, with providing mobile shower and laundry clients referrals and other basic needs items. These collaborative efforts provide assistance to the unhoused residents in Mill Peters, and they also help ensure the health and safety of the community. Next slide, please. And here, we'll take a look at the workflow and map of the county supportive housing system. Uh, you might recognize this slide, uh, because we presented this late last year. For unhoused residents, the process begins with the, uh, street outreach team. This team is on the street. They're talking to unhoused residents, and they're building relationship and rapport with the unhoused client. They're also linking the unhoused clients to medical or behavioral health services. The other primary goal is to use an assessment tool to make sure that the client or the family ends up in the county, uh, countywide community queue. The assessment tool is basically an interview with the unhoused client. The outreach team asks questions around their medical and social risk factors, and how long they have been homeless. After being assessed, the clients are referred and entered into the county's community queue. The county's community queue is dynamic. It is changing and gets updated every time someone gets assessed or placed into supportive housing. While waiting for housing, the outreach workers also provide mobile case management services to help clients get connected with a variety of services. Now for the county finds housing for the client, the outreach worker notifies the client. Once the client accepts the housing referral, they get enrolled into the supportive housing program, get placed into housing. And as the clients move into their new apartment, they're assigned a new project-based case manager at the site. So this describes the supportive housing system, uh, which is affordable housing with onsite support services and case management services. Next slide, please. As clients get assessed by the outreach team, the assessment tool assigns clients with an acuity score based on their vulnerability, risk vectors, and history of homelessness. This acuity score determines the client eligibility and priority for enrollment in the community queue for housing programs. And this is part of the standardized coordinated assessment system that the county utilizes in order to prioritize and match clients with the housing opportunities that best fit their situation. For clients that score between four to seven, they're considered moderate acuity. They're eligible for the rapid rehousing program. Rapid rehousing program helps clients that experience episodes of homelessness, but that they are able to generate enough income to, for long-term housing. Rapid rehousing helps to quickly identify housing opportunities, and they provide temporary short-term financial assistance for deposits, rent, and utilities up to twenty-four months, until a household can increase their income and pay rent and utilities without assistance, and that they are able to remain housed independently. Rapid rehousing also provides support services. Now for clients that score between eight to seventeen, they're considered high acuity, and they're eligible for permanent supportive housing. Permanent supportive housing provides long-term housing, case management, and supportive services for clients who are chronically homeless and have disability conditions. A score of fourteen or higher, it typically placed more quickly into permanent supportive housing. Next slide, please. To understand the impact of county services, including the services provided by the HE team, the county recently shared twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one data on homelessness in Mill Peters. They did, the data showed how Mill Peters affiliated clients are benefiting from the county's housing program and the service of the HE team, and we'll see the data in the following slides. And Milpitas affiliated, that means those clients who report living, working, spending most of their time in, having a recent address in, or having lived in Milpitas before becoming homeless. Part of the county data also shows the demographics info and level of needs for clients. This helps us understand our homeless population and the types of programs that they need. And just to emphasize the purpose of the HE team, the outreach assessment being conducted by the HE team enables Milpitas affiliated clients to be referred into the community queue and enable them to be qualified for placement into supportive housing. Next slide, please. So here, this chart shows the number of Milpitas affiliated clients that are housed in the county's program. The data shows an increase from 78 to 95 in the number of Milpitas affiliated households who are now living in permanent supportive housing throughout the county. I just want to know that this table is comparing a full year of 2020 with just a partial year of 2021. So while the rapid rehousing number is lower right now, a full year of 2021 may see a higher number. Rapid rehousing number fluctuates because it is short-term assistance. Next slide, please. Now, this chart shows the overall number of Milpitas affiliated clients that have been assessed and are in the county's community queue waiting for housing. This chart shows that the number of Milpitas affiliated households waiting for housing has increased by 25% since December. And much of this growth is households that qualify for permanent supportive housing. And again, just want to note this percentage change compares a full year of 2020 with just a partial year of 2021. So the full year of 2021 data could be higher. The increase you see is due in part to the HE team's outreach and assessment of clients not previously in the system. So we're seeing the impact of the HE team. So we just talked about the county services at a high level. Now we'll look at the HE team progress at the local level. The city has contracted with the county's homeless engagement and access team or HE team through Abode Services. On March 1st, the HE team started conducting street outreach to engage unhoused Milpitas residents. This service is for clients who are unhoused and live outdoors on the streets, at bus or train stations, in parks and tents, in vehicles and abandoned properties. The HE team is a multidisciplinary team that includes outreach team and mental health clinicians. The team is integrated with county's behavioral health services, Valley Homelessness Healthcare Program, and the Office of Supportive Housing. The team works to address clients' mental health and medical needs by building trust between the individual and the service team. The HE team also identifies opportunities through which housing and other services can be provided. The HE team is out in the field daily to offer resources, basic needs, and to conduct assessments for unhoused residents. Because the HE team has been conducting proactive outreach throughout Milpitas, they have been able to locate and connect with unhoused residents both at known locations and new locations. And the goal of the HE team is to engage with, enroll, and assess as many unhoused clients as they can in order to provide unhoused with resources and connect them with services. From March through August, during that first six months, the HE team has enrolled a total of 83 clients and assessed 85 clients. The agreement for outreach and assessment services calls for the county to achieve six outcomes over the course of one year. These outcome measures were developed with county staff when we were creating the agreement. And according to county staff, other cities do not have all of these measures. So here, I'll walk through the six outcome measures. The first one is to provide engagement and outreach to minimum 100 unique homeless individuals from the city annually. In the first six months, the HE team has completed 85 assessments and 30 households have scored 14 or higher, which may lead to faster placement in permanent supportive housing. The second outcome measure is that 75% of individuals contacted who are not already in the homeless management information system will have, will have an assessment administered. In the first six months, the HE team has achieved 100% of this because 100% of individuals that were not previously in the homeless management information system have had an assessment administered. Next slide, please. The third outcome is to link 75% of individuals with severe mental health illness to Behavioral Health Services Department, the HE team clinical team for further engagement. In the first six months, the outreach team has referred 11 clients or 13% to the Office of Supportive Housing clinical team for further linkage and mental health support. All of these referrals have scored between 14 to 16 on the assessment, which again may lead to faster placement in permanent supportive housing. The fourth outcome measure is that 20% of clients shall be connected to medical services. In the first six months, the HE team has connected 12% of clients to medical services. And these services are provided based on the client's needs. The sixth outcome measure is that 20% of clients shall improve housing situation. In the first six months, the HE team has helped 12% of clients improve their housing situation by accepting temporary shelter or enrolling into permanent supportive housing or rapid rehousing. Housing placement is determined by client vulnerability and risk factors, as we mentioned earlier. The sixth outcome is that 80% of referrals will have attempts at initial contact within two working days. In the first six months, the HE team has attempted initial contact within two working days for 100% of all of the referrals. Our team has developed an efficient referral process. And many referrals to the HE team have been provided through this process. We receive and make referrals from the police department, recreation and community services, as well as the general public. And our department also, when we receive information, we make referrals as well. And this process has reduced some internal messaging and really maximized the HE team's ability to quickly respond to requests for assessment. Next slide, next up, please. So this table now summarizes the HE team's progress on a monthly basis. And as we mentioned earlier, the HE team has enrolled a total of 83 clients into the county's database. And the HE team has assessed a total of 85 un-duplicated clients in the first six months. The HE team has identified 30 clients for permanent supportive housing with a score of 14 or higher, which will get placed faster into permanent supportive housing. And in the fourth row there, that's the number of referrals to the Office of Support Housing Clinical, Health, Clinical HE team for further linkage and mental health support. And the HE team has referred a total of 11 clients. A total of eight clients have been placed into housing. And you can see the breakdown over there, that's six clients in permanent supportive housing and two in rapidly housing. And just want to note that this is just the progress in the first six months as the HE team really just started the service in the city. And some other cities have contracted from the service for several years. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, the HE team is on track to meet the outcomes defined in the agreement with the county. Outreach and assessment alone cannot reduce homelessness, but it is a key step in assisting clients where they are and in connecting Milpitas affiliated clients with the broader supportive housing system and to connect them to county services. And as for the next steps, staff will bring back to council a report on the next steps and seek council direction prior to expiration of the agreement with the county in February 2022. Next slide, please. So staff recommendation for council, this is for both items 13 and 14. So for 13, it's to receive a report on the Home Key Project of 1,000 Hillview Court. And for item 14, it's to receive media report for unhoused services. And so this concludes the presentation. And as Assistant City Manager Kontuck mentioned, we also have county representative here, Consuelo Hernandez, Director of Office of Supportive Housing, and also Janbury Representative, Tran Tran here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sharon, for the presentation along with Chief Hernandez. Certainly, Project Home Key is a place that has been widely discussed since the last season's holidays. I want to welcome Consuelo and give Consuelo the opportunity to speak here. To provide any comment before taking questions. Consuelo, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank your staff for all of the meetings and coordination that they do with our office. Next Monday is our standing meeting that Sharon and one of your PD sergeants joins. Shelley on my team in our Abode contracts. And I also wanted to take the time to thank Stephen Ashwini for meeting with us. We just had our first quarterly meeting to talk about some of the concerns in the community and really look forward to working with your, with your team on an ongoing basis. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Consuelo. And what a journey we've been on since last holidays. You know, just, it was certainly a critical time with a lot of different actions and on the city council in regards to this. But I think, fast forward to today, almost one year later. Come on, I cannot believe it, 12 months already. You know, it's a different mood. I want to thank you for having the meeting with the Vice Mayor Carmen Montana and myself. I think it was back in June. We had Chief Hernandez there, Lori Smith, CEO Jeff Smith. And we had Otto Lee. Our city manager Steve McHarris was there. And I thought that was a really productive meeting. I think the Vice Mayor Carmen Montana brought up a really great point, which is, this is what we have now in Milpitas. And the way we are, I think in this town, we're going to make the most out of any situation, any situation. And, you know, I think the Vice Mayor and I and everybody in that meeting are committed to supporting this Project Home Key so that it can be the best Project Home Key in the state of California. And I believe we're going in that direction. The changes, well, first of all, a meeting with our city staff and our police chief or our police department, you know, creating a routine there, that was discussed. I want to thank the county and the property manager and this sort of, that working group. It means a huge difference. Furthermore, some of the capital improvement things that you're doing over there at that site with the security cameras, obviously the new property manager, I believe there's new private security as well. And so, you know, of course, we're watching the crime trends. I don't need to repeat some of the things that happened early on. I want to have respect for those situations. But certainly, those are widely reported in the news. Other people can talk about it. I'm, I'm out of breath talking about some of the things that happened there. But just, I'm very hopeful as we move through the holidays that it'll be, this is ours now in Milpitas in terms of just Milpitas proper jurisdiction. This is a parcel that, you know, it's really, like we said at the meeting in June. And so, fast forward to now, it's a lot better, I think, not perfect. But I do see an effort by the county and the property manager to mitigate some of the concerns. We still want to get crime down to zero. And so that's always going to be the goal. And so, yeah, thanks. I'm just receiving the presentation. I'm gonna go down the line here for the request next up and time check, time check, 10:08. Okay, Councilor Chua.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. First of all, I want to thank Sharon and her team. Or I remember asking for this monthly status report, quarterly report sometime in April. And the data at that time was like sporadic because that was the first month. But working with the supportive team, the county, it came up with really good data now. And congratulations to the team and also to the county team for your help on this. Because the statistics, it doesn't lie and it tells us good data to move forward. My question is, first of all, I just want to ask Chief Hernandez one quick question, please. September 2021, again, why do we have 20 calls? Do we know?
Yeah, so the breakdown for September, there were several disturbance calls. There were some welfare checks, 911 hangups, things that were less significant that did not result in a police report.
And the six ones are the more serious ones, assault, stolen vehicle, those ones?
Yeah, so, so can we go back to slide seven, I think it is? So I thought it was important for council to know the service that we're providing there and give you a total picture of the activity. And so there is total number of calls. But it's important to also recognize that out of the total number of calls, that can be a resident calling and saying something like, hey, there's a suspicious car in the parking lot. And it may not amount to a police report. But I still thought it was important for you guys to see how many times we go there on a monthly basis. And then more importantly, I thought it was important to see the breakdown of the reports. In the description are the types of reports that were taken for each of the numbered category to the left. So using July for the example, there was an assault with a knife. There were two mental health calls, and then there was a warrant arrest.
I like this, I like this breakdown, actually. It, it gives a lot of information in terms of the number of calls, the quality of the calls, and, and, and the performance of, I mean, what happened, really. So thank you for this one. Thank you, Chief.
Certainly.
I have a question on Sharon, if you will. You have the, the data. I want to go back and see. When we first started in April, I'm looking back to data and comparing it to present. I think we have about 85 assessed. Not assessed, 80, oh yeah, no, not 85, but we have 85 unhoused that we know of in the city. Correct. There's a slide there somewhere. So I want to see, right, we have 85 unhoused. What is the current one? Is it 118, 117?
Yeah, Councilmember Chua. Yeah, we don't have a slide on that because those numbers are approximate and I'll explain why. But you're correct. When we started in March, at that time, the unhoused count of 64 was provided because that was based on the numbers that were identified by the police department. That's when we started. And during that month, the HE team also connected with 20 unhoused residents at outreach locations where the contact was made in non-encampment setting. But at that time, because we didn't have the data and the HE team needed time to check whether these individuals were duplicated in the account or unduplicated, so that's why they were not combined yet. And after several months of activity, those unhoused residents appeared to be unduplicated individuals. So that meant the unhoused count in March is approximately in the 80s in terms of the HE team's activities at both encampment and outreach locations. Yes. And since then, yes, every month, they have connected with new residents, new unhoused residents at both known locations and new locations. So till the end of August, it's approximately 117. And it's important to know that this unhoused count is based on the HE team's activities. It is not static and it's approximate because some of the individuals have not provided identifying information to the HE team. And the unhoused clients also move from location to location. So it's a reflection of the HE team's activities in terms of that number. And their goal is to, you know, engage with, yeah, and assess as many unhoused clients as they can. And their goal is to engage with, yeah, and assess as many unhoused clients as they can.
So what we can summarize is this, for a more firmer number that we can actually kind of like quantify support is eighty-five, and now we're in the one seventeen, correct? Yeah, around there. I know it's static data because because of the static, it's static because they move around. So I understand that. My question is, out of the, because we're into six months now, out of the one seventeen, one eighteen unhoused, right, how many did have BSS?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five. Out of the eighty-five, how many actually got support, permanent supportive housing and some temporary housing in the last six months out of the eighty-five assessed unhoused?
Yeah. So six clients have been placed in permanent supportive housing and two in rapid rehousing.
So a total of eight? Ten percent of, almost ten percent of eighty-five assessed. Okay. My question to Ms. Hernandez. Hi. Ms. Hernandez, thank you for being here this evening. My question to you is, how can we work as a team to increase the number of assessed unhoused to get permanent or rapid housing? How can we do that? How can we work together to do that?
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. I think the city of Milpitas took the first initial step through this revenue agreement with the heat team, which increases the likelihood of your unhoused community being on the community queue. And I did want to share with you that the overarching challenge in our system is that there are nine thousand plus homeless people in our community. And for permanent supportive housing, we only have three thousand six hundred and fifty-two slots available. Of those, on an annual basis, about thirteen percent turnover, meaning that unless we add new units or unless we add new money for services, only forty-six new spaces become available on an annual basis. And there are over six thousand people on this waitlist that Sharon explained to you.
Forty-six for the entire county?
That's correct.
My gosh, okay.
So so I think the first step you all took is incredible. And in six months, you see the progress of the number of people that are assessed, that now have access. And then that paired with all of the other work that is happening. I'm not sure, Sharon, if you shared with the council in the past, but the Sango Court project that we worked on together, which includes a hundred and two units that recently received their final tax credits, and that will be new housing that comes to Milpitas. And I think that would be an opportunity for us to figure out how we can prioritize some of those units through conversations that we've had with. I believe, Councilmember, this was prior to you joining the council. But I think that there is an opportunity there, and that project is still a few years away because it does take twenty-four months for construction. But I think that would be one immediate opportunity.
Is the, I'm trying to just gauge the percentage of increase versus the percentage of this decrease, you know, the number of unhoused getting 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 placed. And if you're saying that it's only forty-six units per year for the entire county, that's really dismal. It's really disappointing and worrisome, to be honest with you. But I just, again, I want to thank you for your team and working with our team. I think that for now, it's, we still have a lot of work to do. And and we will keep on working with you and finding ways to house or unhouse. Thank you so much. Thank you both. Thank you, Sharon. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. What happened to these days? Okay, I'm done, and please give whoever's next.
Okay, so Councilmember, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Who else wants to speak? Councilmember, let me see, I don't know how you do this thing.
I'm trying to get the mic.
Looking good, Vice Mayor.
We're trying to make the mic, okay.
All right, here we go. Sorry, I had to go to the Latrine. I am back. Next up, Councilmember Dominguez.
Thank you so much, Mayor, for the time. First and foremost, I just want to thank staff. You guys are doing an amazing job. And Consuelo, thank you so much for, I know you are definitely, you know, I don't, I applaud what you do. I'll say that, right? I know you have a lot of patience helping not only our city but other cities go through some of the biggest challenges, which is housing and unhoused. So I just want you to know that I appreciate everything that you do for our community. I personally wanted to share a story, a success story of last week when I was out with one of our nonprofit organizations. After, I did get a call from three members in our community who have received the call they've been waiting for to get housed. So we're housing. I know it's moving slowly. I know we wish we could move it faster, but there's a lot of other elements. The only question, there's a couple of questions that I had, and they have been answered. Thank you so much for the presentation. I definitely love, Chief, the diagram that you did. Thank you very much for moving them into different categories because I think that helps us as a council look to see what resources we need to invest a little bit more into. One of the categories that I definitely, with domestic violence, I know is a conversation that we're having. But one of the things I know that when we moved into an MOU with Project Home Key, with, well, when the county did, not the city of Milpitas, they had said that there was going to be an advisory roundtable committee or some sort of community group, not to help oversee precisely the project, but to help kind of just give feedback, make sure that there was key stakeholders from the city present. I do know that there is different housing communities in San Jose that have it, and it's very successful because they could move through it and find what challenges they are facing and then move through those challenges quicker. I was just wondering, did we ever do that community? I don't know what it was called. I just remember it was like some sort of oversight group that was in that MOU.
Thank you, Councilmember Dominguez, for the question. I think that was directed at maybe the Jamboree team as the lead developer. I can share with you that we have not yet participated in they're called different things, Community Action Committee. Sometimes they're called Community Advisory Committee Meetings. And I don't believe that Jamboree has held one, but the county stands that they're ready to participate in that if if the city is interested in in having some type of similar group meeting. I've seen them happen on a quarterly basis, annual basis. Again, happy to entertain the opportunity.
Thank you. Yes, definitely. I would love to see that happen. I know that in my other hat for for other things, I do participate in two of them. One's going to start for Second Street Studios, and then there's a couple of other elements that, project sites in San Jose. I think it's a great tool to put people together. They meet once a month. So staff, if we could please add maybe a to-do list or a task to make sure that this happens with a developer. And then I want to confirm, who is managing the site now? I know there was a change of staff, so I was just wondering if someone could share who's who's the management company over there now?
It is Hyder. Oh, sorry, Ashwini, go ahead.
That's okay. Yeah, Hyder Company, Councilmember Dominguez. And that was a change that happened in July as well, along with the security company.
Okay, perfect. And then in terms of security, did they end up adding any cameras or any sort of surveillance on the premises?
Yes, twenty-two on the exterior and then twenty-two more planned on the interior as part of Phase Two.
And is there currently a plan for entry of the building?
They've added key fobs at all the entryways as well, Councilmember.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I would love to make sure that we we do this community advisory, whatever we decide to call it. I think it's really, really important for us. Just again, to just check in, I would love to attend, even if it's just a spectator, because I think it's important for us to be visible for our our community members who live in this building, but as well as our community. So I know this has been something, again, I know it's taken a long time to to get to where we're at. So I'm very proud of this moment. So if we could maybe just have a a list and maybe prioritize this to happen, I would really appreciate it. The other thing that I would like to ask, I know that there has been conversations with the county in terms of the placement and any the additional rooms that are in there. As I know you had a slide on this, but just if you could kindly remind me, how many is the ADA rooms that were in construction, are those already available?
Sharon, do you want to take that one in terms of occupancy?
Yes, Councilmember Dominguez, thank you for the question. So fifty clients have already moved in and sixteen more are ready to move in as of early September. And the county team is working on sixty-six additional clients to fully occupy all of those units. And as far as the construction, there were some units that had to meet accessibility requirements in the building code as well as the Limiting Disabilities Act Title II. So those units were completed and those unit conversions were done by February twenty twenty-one this year. So the county team is working on the occupancy of all the units.
And maybe if the Jamboree representative is still available, maybe they can respond. I don't see.
Yes, good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. I'm T. Tran. I've been with Jamboree the last five years. And I just want to say how exciting this project was for us to to start and that, you know, again, just acknowledge the leadership from both the county and the city and staff side that helped, you know, got this project off a rough start. So I think we turned the corner and we're really excited that we had an opportunity here to to push it to a finish line. As far as the question on the accessible units, yeah, so all the units are available now for occupancy. And we're working with Consol and her team to get all the tenants leased up. Hopefully, by the end of this year, I think it's going to overflow into, because of the holiday, I think we're going to end up in the early year to get a hundred percent occupancy. And then to answer that Councilmember Dominguez's question about the meeting, we definitely can work together to get the community meeting together. I know that there's requests to meet with supervisor, one of the supervisor, to come to the project to tour. So we're working towards that, to have that probably after our Phase Two is complete, which is going to be end of this year. So we're aiming for beginning of the year to to have a grand opening to celebrate. And then from that meeting, we're hoping to invite the community and come and look at the project and see, you know, and meet the tenants, meet the the management team or services team. So it's a good time to to see the project once we get there.
Okay, thank you. I know the queue is long. I know. I know the process. I know it's daunting. But we're there. And Consuelo, whatever you could do to get some Milpitas, please, help them. There is three women that live literally down the street. One is carrying literally a bag. She is in a very, very bad medical state. I will send an email out. I know there's a couple of advocates in Milpitas who have been asking the supervisor and your office. These are folks who honestly, I don't know how they're going to survive another six months out on the street. And so I am going to ask because the rooms are available, and I know I know there's a process. I know all of that. But I know that there's also talks about tiny homes. I know that the supervisor is looking at areas in Milpitas. And I will be the first to say that we need to figure out Project Home Key first. And as much I want, as much as I want to support housing elements in the city, I think it's really, really important for us to get this right and to show our community that, look, we could have a successful transitional housing, permanent housing project. It could be safe. We could work together with the county, and I do not want to miss that opportunity. I really don't because it's been challenging times, right? We didn't have a say in this. It's here. We're working together. And again, progress, I want to focus on the progress, but I also want to be very realistic. And so I have, you know, been following some meetings. I've been going to some community neighborhood association meetings where this has came up already in terms of the county looking at the areas in Milpitas possibly to do different types of programs. And so I just want to ask that we could please just make sure that this one works before that we look at other projects that have had some challenges so we don't repeat those challenges. The other thing that I would like to do, I know that it's hard to keep track of our unhoused population because they move so frequently. I know one of the things that we've talked about in the past is if there's any cleanups or if there's any notices, have, and I'm not too sure who could answer this, but have we been able to set up some sort of process where we can all work together and know if there's a cleanup either initiated by CHP or the trains, the the trains folks, oh, my God, I'm losing my track of that, or the county or the city? Is there a way that we could maybe convene somehow before the cleanup happens in order to just make sure that the nonprofit that we're working with and that services from the county are available when that encampment gets cleaned up? Because I have been hearing a lot of questions, and I want the public to know I have made a public records request because I don't know who's asking for these cleanups. So I could best assure you, it's not me. And so I just want to make sure that there is a process. And I think it's, I am all for cleaning up our city, but I do want to make it go on record that we could do that in a very compassionate way. And one of the things is we need to make sure that the services are ready to go. I'm not too sure if there is a process in place where I really don't know what that looks like. So I'm not too sure who could answer that for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Dominguez. I'd be happy to answer the question. I will share with you that our office does not conduct sweeps in any parts of the county. Generally, what we try to do is provide our services to the cities that either decide to do a sweep, or sometimes Caltrans is involved, and we provide our technical assistance. Oftentimes, we have also sent our outreach workers. You know, we take them off their permanent housing search work, and we'll send them to a city to provide assistance. That's generally the the OSH role. We we know that there are some other county departments that may need to sweep an area for weeds, weed abatement, or trash, which I know did happen in Milpitas on a county-owned parcel. And when that happens, we have asked that we be involved so that we can work with the local city to at least notify and coordinate that. So we're happy if you all are experiencing some abatements of encampments. And you see that happening, please feel free to communicate with our office to see if we can offer our assistance. But we do not, I just wanted to clear for the record, we do not initiate any type of encampment clearing.
Thank you very much. As a point of personal privilege, we do have public comment remaining. And so I'll ask the Councilmember Dominguez to be mindful of our public who are awaiting public comment.
Thank you very much for asking, but there's a couple of questions that I have from the public. So I definitely want to make sure that I use my time appropriately. So at this time, staff, is there a way, for example, if most of the encampment sweeps, if there is a request, does that go through the city manager? Or is that a direct ask from the mayor or another city council member? I'm just trying to figure out, how do these sweeps happen in Milpitas?
Councilmember Dominguez, I'll start and if City Manager McCadus wants to add to it, too. In terms, I just wanted to address the prior question and just add to what Consuelo mentioned. We do actually take several weeks to have Sharon's team reaches out to the heat team to do outreach if we know any cleanups are planned. A lot of those are based on complaints from residents. There may be kind of unsafe conditions. But we we do build in time for outreach and making sure that services are provided to the individuals out there. And I'll turn it over to City Manager Sharon if she wants to address kind of the process. But we do have a process in place anytime we're aware of any cleanup that is going to happen at a site.
Thank you, Shwini. I'd like to, yeah, add in as well. So it may be similar to what Shwini said. So we did hear there's different agencies. So there's different locations where these cleanups may happen. And I think just starting at, starting out, well, how do they happen? Well, yeah, the complaints come in through us. Sometimes they come in through the My Milpitas app for trash and potentially homeless living in areas. We have private property complaints. Sometimes they come in through the police department. Eventually, they essentially come into the city, and then they go through a process. And that process depends on the location, just like with trash cleanup. Sometimes there's the encampment cleanup as well, or the encampments themselves. Sometimes you asked if council members forward these complaints. When I hear from any council member, they're typically associated, they're always associated with resident complaints. And quite often, maybe 100% of them are already have already come in by residents, so we're already aware. Usually, we know before I even hear from a council member. Usually, we see it. You know, our police chief, Jared, he's nodding, said, yeah, he hears about it. We talk almost every day about any given location in the city with this topic. So it's, we're very much coordinated and engaged. Then when it comes to these different locations, you mentioned the railroads, that's Union Pacific Railroad. When they do their cleanups, and it's, it's, I think it's always coordinated with the city. I don't think they've ever done one just on their own. They're not out, they're not that good about that. We're the eyes, which is really the community. The community makes the complaint. We contact Union Pacific. They option, they give us the option. They'll send their team out ahead if there is actually people living on their property before they do the cleanup, or they will coordinate with us. We've opted to do that part because we know our our population better than Union Pacific. But they do offer it, but we've done it. They will then come in and do the physical removal of debris and things. But we'll do through our heat team and our partners with the county. That's Union Pacific. Valley Water, it's the same thing. We partner with Valley Water. So we do, because we know our our population better. We do that through the county services that we pay for before cleanup is done. And then Valley Water helps us with the cleanup part. Then what is the other? Caltrans is the other agency. So Caltrans, again, we're engaged with them. At Caltrans, we also do the outreach. They could do it, but we do it. And then they do the cleanup. On the city property, of course, it's obvious that we do that.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you very much. Just want to do a time check.
Thank you so much. So I just want to make sure that the request is never directed directly, like, the request is never a council member to the agency or the mayor to the agency where they bypass you. And then we don't make an assessment or we don't coordinate services?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any council member going directly to agencies. I think we have elected representatives that talk to each other. And that's what you guys do. But with the agency work, it's staff to staff.
Perfect. I just want to, perfect, that builds clarification. And the only reason I ask is because we did have a cleanup and that did not take place a couple of weeks ago. And I was there for five hours. And so I know there's something that was missed. And so I have been told that it was an elected member that made the call directly to an agency. And that's why I did a public records request. So I know you guys have seen that. That is why. I think it's really important that we don't bypass Steve. And the reason for that is for this, because we want to make sure we don't miss the unhoused being assessed by the county and that they are not being provided those services when a sweep happens. I understand that places need to be cleaned up. But again, we could do it in a very humane way where we could make sure that people are getting those services and that we're not bypassing an opportunity for them to get assessed. And so I do want to give a shout out to the the train, Pacific Railroad. They were extremely professional, extremely kind, and they took their time. So I do appreciate that as well as our police department. It was really nice to see and to hear. So I think assessment, in terms of assessment, that would be my question. In terms of a security plan, I think that's something that the community advisory committee or group or however we name it, that's really important to see. I think it's going to help our community, help give feedback, and really enhance any security measures that we need to enhance around the property. In terms of the county.
Going to a point of personal privilege, pardon my interruption, Councilmember. You've held the discussion for half an hour now. We do have two community members that are patiently waiting, Allison McDonald and Joseph Weinstein, have her public comment. I want to kindly ask that you consider yielding your time after 30 minutes, half an hour.
Thank you very much for your kind request.
So that members can chime in as well.
City manager, I have one more question. And so I was thinking about assessments, about security. The other thing that in the community group, because these are really important elements, and I'm taking a lot of time because these are questions that are being asked by the community to us. I know, Consuelo, that the county had asked, made a commitment in the beginning to do dumpsters or trash cans around this area. I'm not too sure if that's something that has happened already. And if not, if we could just please go back to that conversation, because I know that was a commitment that was made in one of the community meetings. So that's really, really important for us to to happen. And I know that we would all really appreciate that. And in terms of a security plan for the site, I'm not too sure if one has been crafted intentionally. And if not, I know there's other housing areas that they have done like a security plan for the site. If we could have that made for the site and then share it with us, I would really appreciate it, because I think that's really, really important for us to stay safe. With that, I conclude all of my questions. And thank you so much for the time.
Thank you very much. All right, we go to public comment here. Thanks to our residents for waiting. We did not forget about you. First up, we have Allison McDonald. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Ms. Dominguez did address some of the things I was going to talk about. So thank you. I do think that the advisory committee should, and the stakeholder meetings that are currently happening should include some representatives of the unhoused community and the local unhoused service providers. Secondly, with regard to the small percentage of our folks who have been assessed, who are getting housing, I really would urge the council to work with the county to find additional ways to house people, because it's going to be two years before we have the apartments on Sangio Court available. We need to do something now. And thirdly, I was going to ask the police chief.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Next, Joseph Weinstein, feel free to reach out to the city council, myself, city manager, or the police chief via email for further discussion. Yolanda Garcia, welcome. Apparently, your name went above Mr. Weinstein. I'm not sure what happened, but I'm just going to go off the Zoom. So it says, Yolanda Garcia, welcome.
Hi, are you sure you don't want to go with Mr. Weinstein first?
I thought it was odd. I don't know, your name just kind of jumped over his and you're here now. So carry it, take it away.
It's probably because I'm G and he's D.
Maybe, yeah.
Okay, so thank you for the time. A couple of things. First of all, there was a sweep on Union Pacific in July. And the residents there were only given less than 45 minutes to move their stuff before it was bulldozed and cleaned out. At that time, apparently, the process didn't work because they did not get any services from the county or the city. So I don't know how that worked. The only one that came out actually was Jason from Abode, because he's awesome. And the rest of us from Hope for the Unhoused and Laredo's Brigade helped those residents. The second item is I wanted to just formally invite anybody on on city council and in the community on Saturday morning, this Saturday from 8:30 to 11:00, we're having a cleanup day on Railroad Avenue. So if anybody's interested to help, I would appreciate anybody that wants to come out. We'll provide bags and gloves, and we might even have donuts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Yoli. Yeah, donuts, that's the second time I heard that tonight. Okay, next up, Joseph Weinstein.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions. I don't know if anybody's going to answer them tonight. But first of all, I walk in the area every day. I'm in the neighborhood. I'm looking at the report here. 20 calls for 50 residents really makes my hair stand and end. I'm very, very concerned about that. And I'm wondering, are we getting compensation from either the state or the county for this extra police work that we're doing? And the second thing that I would like to see is how is our police department working with, I keep hearing mention about a security firm there. But I got to tell you, looking at 20 calls for 50 people, I'm wondering whether I should be walking in that neighborhood.
That is a record number of calls. And actually, do have some concerns or just engagement I'd like with our police department and the county, but I'm willing to do that at another time. I'm going to go ahead and make, before I go to Councilmember Chua, I want to go ahead and make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Looking, you need a second, 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 need a second. Who got a second? Second to adjourn the meeting. Motion to adjourn the meeting, looking for a second. No, you're going to get it. You're going to get it. Okay, we'll go to Councilmember, I made the motion. Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor Chen. I just want to point out, and this is, I think it's important to for everybody to know, that ever since we started around March, April, the beginning of this year, the with the leadership of our city manager, he really made an effort with connecting with Union Pacific, Caltrans, Valley Water, and Santa Clara County. They have a regular meeting. They're not, we, we aren't doing a lot of things that not even a lot of people know. They only goes to Altran meetings, and everybody's engaged. I just want to point that out. I mean, people think that we are doing stuff in the right process, legal and the right process.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I wanted to say that.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you to City Manager Steve and all his team, your executive team, your, our Milpitas police, our fire, everybody. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Chua. Yeah, we don't want no trouble. We'll go to the Vice Mayor here. Remember, the motion adjourned. Next up, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. My comments are not going to take that long. They'll be brief. I had a question for Consuelo. Consuelo, you mentioned that we have 9,000 people that need housing. And there's a waiting list of 3,000 or something like that. You know, in Milpitas, we only have 85 unhoused. And one of my biggest pet peeves here was that we, we don't have local control. We should, that room key should have had, and I know all of us, all of the council, that's one of our greatest concerns, is that we are not housing, or you are not housing, the county is not housing, our very own, people that have been out in the streets for a very, very long time. And that's one of our biggest concerns. And and I know you guys can do that, but I still don't know why you haven't done that. I know five people that are been living out in the street. And one of them did reach out, and he's on the waiting list. But what is the problem? Why can't you house these Milpitas residents? Consuelo.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Montano, for the question. We do and are required for our funding, which amounts to over $50 million a year. We are required to follow a coordinated entry system, which means that we do have to take people in order that they are on a list based on their program eligibility. So we can't bypass that process. We do have to follow that order. And this is why it's important to be placed on the list through coordinated entry, so that you can get housing. As Sharon mentioned during her presentation through that work, they have identified people that are at the top of the list. And as new apartments get built, you know, we'll take that order. Right now, the 60 people have already been identified for Hillview Court through coordinated entry system. And we have to get through those people, find them, help them with their documentation before we can create a new list for referrals.
I understand that. But see, that's the problem. That's the flaw in your, in the way that county is handling this. Unfortunately, and we have no local control.
And it's.
Consuelo's the messenger. She's the messenger.
It is required. It is required by the Home Key Grant that we also follow this process. If we don't follow that process, then we would be in violation of our grant agreement with the state.
And so the new one on 102 Sangio Court, that's still out three more years. Is that's also going to be supportive housing?
One third of the units are supportive housing. The balance are deed restricted affordable housing where the referrals don't come from our office.
Okay, and so I'm just, I'm just really hoping that, I know you guys can do it. It's, you know, there's a, there's a will, there's a way. But I don't know why. But anyway, that's all my questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a lot bigger than the county. It's bigger than the county. That's just a matter of the fact. So, you know, I've been bugging Consuelo from the very first day. And so I, I've come to a point where, you know, yeah, it's just the state, it's the state. Maybe go hire, we talked to the Assembly Member, huh? He's a good guy, person. Okay, great. I want to go to Councilmember Fan, but I did make a motion to adjourn. And I want to get out of here before midnight. I know follow up questions can be done in the coming days. But let's go to Councilmember Fan, and I did make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I'll be brief. I just wanted to thank Consuelo and county staff, as well as Tom and Roger and the whole team at Jamboree. I'm very grateful for. Um, I'm very grateful, uh, for the work that you guys do and look forward to continued partnership.
Thank you very much. Uh, you know, I'll sneak in a question here. Consuelo, one more. Um, when it comes to the crime, um, perhaps, uh, one question here. Perhaps maybe one of your residents at Project Home Key Milpitas, perhaps they commit a crime, maybe a violent crime or illegal weapons. Are they then, um, discontinued as a resident or do you allow them to continue to stay there?
Thank you for the question, Mayor. And I, I did wanna say that one of the great things about our working relationship with your police department is having access to the data, um, so that we can make a distinction between the calls for service that come in or the hangups um, versus those cases that actually become a report because it helps us identify trends. For instance, when the project first opened, we had a client that hadn't been housed for a long time and would call nine-one-one because they locked themselves out of their, of their apartment. Um, but through engagement and through discussions, they don't do that anymore. Um, so with that said, we do have program requirements and participation rules that if they violate those participation rules, they are grounds for termination from the program. That is different than their lease agreement because they still have entitlement, you know, still have rights as a tenant. Um, but they would be suspended from the program. And so some of the resources that they have would inevitably lead them to, um, relocate to a different site.
Okay, um, okay, I'll take that for tonight. Uh, you know, you're always a, uh, email or phone call away. I appreciate that. And I wanna wish everybody a good evening, uh, and we'll get out of here before midnight. Got a lot accomplished. Beautify Milpitas. Uh, you know what? I made a motion to adjourn. We got a second from Councilmember Chuah. Was that you? All right, okay, um, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Haven't done this one in a while. Okay, uh, the motion is carried. This meeting is adjourned.